Hey, good evening, everyone. I realize that I am not Chris Keller and I hope you do as well. This is Jerry Lee Bennett. I'm acting mayor while Mr. Keller, Mayor Keller, is away on travel that was scheduled before the election. He keeps saying that he would not have gone away for this long had he not chosen to run for for mayor, but I don't know who can blame him. It sounds like a really nice vacation and well deserved. So please take take some kindness on your acting mayor and help me along a little bit with the parliamentary procedure. Two quick, one more announcement before we get started with the agenda agenda. Just to share that Mayor Keller and I attended the Germantown Alternative Housing Strategies Meeting in September before he left. And I believe that meeting can now be accessed. I'll have to look for the link. But they are posting the the links for the meeting so people can watch them and hear what other people all around the county are saying about it. I would say that it was maybe seventy-five percent of the audience that where we were were making comments that were generally critical of the proposals, not necessarily throw the whole thing out, but major change needed before it would be approved. And I've heard we, I did participate with Mayor Keller in a meeting with some of the neighboring mayors about the letter that we're working on to send to the state.
Has that not been submitted yet?
I have not gotten word that it's gone yet.
Do you have?
Yeah, we were asked to send it to the members of our respective delegations. I did receive confirmation from Delegate Solomon's office that he had received my email and they have introduced, basically are starting the process of putting together a bill for consideration when the legislature reconvenes.
So the letter did get signed?
The letter has been signed. It was signed by a total of eleven municipalities.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that would be great. Yes, I'd be happy to send that to you.
Thank you. And we could post it on the website?
It was eleven. I believe that they did not hear back from Tacoma Park by the deadline.
Okay, so that's great majority.
Yes.
Pretty good.
And Tacoma Park is gonna do their own?
I'm not sure what they're doing. I have not spoken to anyone there.
Right. They're generally supportive, but they have a much more complex their structure is a little bit different. Zoning structure and everything than the other municipalities.
Yeah, they don't have zoning authority, but they have the opportunity to weigh in and it takes a super majority of the planning board to basically not follow what Tacoma Park City Council was requesting.
All right. Thank you for that update, Barb. All right. So I still encourage all residents and individual council members to look at the proposal, the the report on the alternative housing strategies and provide individual comments. We have not yet made an attempt to get a sense of the town, but Chris and I have talked about that and we'll talk about it again when he comes back. All right. I think at that point, we can, I should have called us to order and checked on, but we are all present, just to state that for the minute. Now we can go on to approving the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda proposed tonight?
I'd like to make one strike of particular.
Okay.
Item on the agenda, and that is, I don't believe we're ready to talk about the pool wall and I would like to to propose it's last thing on new business and I'd like to propose that we postpone that until next month.
What are we waiting for?
We don't have agreement. I, well, I mean, if you look at the letter that we got from Donna Call John, she basically is proposing that we don't have all our ducks in a row and I don't think we have an agreement on how it's to be repaired. The drawings that I saw were definitely nothing that was what we had agreed on.
Could I make an alternate proposal? So which would be to keep it on the agenda, but limit it to what it is, a discussion item, not an action item, and just make sure we're all up to date so that when we do put it on the agenda next month, it can be a more fulsome conversation with everyone being more informed of what has occurred to the past. Because I think I think we could use a few moments tonight to just get up to the speed of what has transpired thus far. And I agree with you, we need to have some consultation, give the pool board more time for consultation on the proposal that the engineer put together.
Right. And I'd also, okay, then it's fine.
Doing a very limited light discussion so that we're not starting from scratch next month. We're all just reminding ourselves of what has transpired thus far and where we are.
Accepted. I'll withdraw my request then.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just know what needs to be done before the next meeting so we have our ducks in a row between now and then.
Right. So we can use that discussion time for that purpose.
Right.
All right. Thank you. Any other changes to the agenda?
Just the change order two. I don't know that I can make a motion, but I can make a request.
Okay, like me too.
Thank you.
All right. So Barb has, or you're going to do it, Todd. Thank you.
Just, yeah, I've made the motion, I guess.
I'll second it if that's what we need to add it to the agenda, right?
Can you be more specific about what the agenda?
It's about the change order.
Two.
Two.
On the, it's on the sidewalks, right? Road and sidewalks improvement project.
Waverly.
Yeah.
Right. So this is two.
All of them. It's a big change order for a bunch of stuff.
To add an action item for change order number two for roadworks.
Thank you. Yes, that's it. Exactly.
All right. Thank you. And we'll discuss that during the action section. Any other changes to the agenda?
Do they need a vote? No.
I think we can go consensus on the agenda changes. All right. We'll move forward then. The consent agenda then is as listed in the agenda, the approval of the town council minutes from September, mayoral appointments to the Arboretum Committee and mayoral appointment to the Archives Committee. I will just add a note there that there are in on the town calendar and in Barb's note that went out to the community, some descriptions of the volunteers backgrounds and they all sound like great additions to both committees. And then also the purchase of the replacement pickup truck, which had been also discussed at the budget preparation for FY twenty-five, which we are now in several times and the summary is in Barb's attachments for tonight's meeting as well. So with that, I'm seeking a a movement to move forward.
So I'll propose, oh, yeah, I'll propose a motion.
Thank you. I couldn't get the right word out.
So I'll move that we approve the consent agenda items as they are presented to us.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I believe I'm allowed to vote as well as a council member. Aye as well. Okay, unanimously approved and we move forward. Presentation by residents. Do we have any residents who would like to make a presentation tonight? Outside of things that are already on the agenda? Anyone online? Barbara Jackson, is that just the cursor by Barbara Jackson's name? It looks like a hand, so it's very confusing. Okay. All right. With that, we have no presentation. Hi, Barbara. Did you want to make any comments tonight? I think it was just the cursor.
It's a cursor. No, no, it's not.
All right. Thank you, Barbara. Good to see you.
I unmuted. I personally think that we need no discussion right now about the pool wall because there was insufficient information for both the council and the pool to consider before this meeting.
Thank you, Barbara. Agreed. We're going to keep it very limited just to remind everybody of the history to date tonight. And then we'll put it on a full, for a full agenda item next month.
It doesn't look like it's a reminder. It looks like it's an original education.
We talked about this wall at multiple meetings, so.
Thank you, Barbara. I appreciate your comments. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Any other presentations by residents? Okay. Next item on the agenda, we have a public hearing for the variance application for ten eight one eight Kennelworth Avenue relief from lot coverage. Barb, will you be making an initial statement about this one?
Sure. And we're also joined this evening by our town attorney, Ron Bolt. Ron, thank you for being here. Before you this evening is a variance request submitted by the owners of one zero eight one eight Kennelworth Avenue. The variance request is for relief from the maximum allowable lot coverage and there is included in your agenda packet a letter from the Schrader family who are the property owners. Also included in your agenda packet is a copy of section four oh three of the town code, which outlines the process and procedures associated with consideration of a variance request. As you're doing tonight, a public hearing must be held to consider any application for a variance. Additionally, a written opinion must be prepared and made public. Included in your agenda packet as attachment three is a letter from the Chair of the Garrett Park Land Use Advisory Committee outlining their review comments for the variance request. I know the applicant, Mr. Schrader, is in attendance this evening, but before we ask him to come to the mic, Mr. Bolt, are there any comments you'd like to make?
I could note for the council, the general process that a variance hearing follows to help guide tonight's proceeding. So as this is a due process hearing, Maryland law that the process for the hearing should generally be as follows. First, we've got the presentation of the staff report, which we've already had. Then the applicant will have the opportunity to present and the applicant can note that the council has had the opportunity to review your materials in advance. So please don't feel like you have to restate everything, but please address what items you'd like. Then the council members will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff. Following that, anyone else in attendance at the hearing who wants to make a comment in support or in opposition or to ask a question of the applicant has the opportunity to do so. After that, the applicant's given a brief rebuttal. Following that, the record closes and the council will deliberate and entertain a motion directing me to prepare a decision, either approving or denying the request. And as Ms. Matthews noted, if the request is approved, the decision is not final until it has been written up and signed and that's a process that usually takes about a week or two. So with that, we can go to the applicant's presentation. And Barb, would you like them to come up to the microphone or?
Yes.
Mr. Schrader and I talked about that earlier.
Thank you, Ron. We appreciate your help.
Sure thing.
Schrader, welcome. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Michael Schrader and I live at one oh eight one eight Kennelworth Avenue, so right next door. I live there with my wife and my daughter. We've lived here for about five years. And first, thank you for hearing my application. Really appreciate it. Appreciate the time you spent on this and all that matters for the town. And thanks to Barb for her help along with this, along this process and Kayla and to George Martin for his help along the way, helping me understand sort of what looks like it might be kind of on the fairway and what probably is unlikely to work in the application. So I think so the problem I have is I have a porch that is very old. It's probably about eight feet by ten feet, a little bit smaller than that.
Where is it?
In the back of the house. And it is, it's old, it's in disrepair and, you know, cracking spindles, cracking support beams and there's some rot. And underneath it, I have a basement area away with a retaining wall that the retaining wall is bowing in and it's going to crumble at some point in the, you know, near or, you know, intermediate term of future. So for the safety of, you know, safe use of the house, for the safety of my family, I'd like to fix these things. As you know, I'm sure fixing stuff like this is very expensive. And so when we fix it, what we'd like to do is expand it to make it really useful. Because right now, an under sort of eighty square foot size porch that includes a walkway to go outside is is really hard to use even for a small family, a family of three. We can't really fit like a dinner table on there or even a small table to eat around. And we'd like to, so.
What are the dimensions of it now and what are you proposing the enlargement to be?
Yeah, right now it's it's just under like eight by ten.
Eight by ten.
Proposing to move it to about nine by thirty-five.
Wow.
And I have a, I actually think the drawing on it might be in your packet, but if not, I have extra copies of it that I could, I could give to you. So it would go from where it currently is located further north on the house by about twenty-five feet and further west by about a foot.
Towards Kennelworth. I mean, towards Strathmore, I guess.
Towards Strathmore, five feet, towards Ken and Molly's, a little under a foot. And so to be clear, what we're asking for is a variance from the lot coverage requirements, not from any setback requirements. So we worked carefully with George Martin to ensure that we complied with the
So it's not in the right of way?
That's right. That's right.
If you look at the drawing, it doesn't, it doesn't extend past the house.
Right.
Please continue.
Yeah. And and so, yeah, basically to avoid incurring a huge expense just to get a small porch that we have a hard time using now, we'd like to expand it so that we can really use it. You know, for the useful enjoyment, you know, now and in the future, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years from now. You know, as as you're probably more familiar with it than I am, but section four point oh two of the Garrett Park ordinance says that you can't exceed eighteen percent of lot coverage. But if you're on a small lot like mine, which is under eighty-six hundred square feet, then the council will consider applications that go up to the lesser of one thousand seven hundred and twenty square feet or twenty-five percent lot coverage. So what we're proposing is under both of those, one thousand six hundred and twenty-eight square feet and about twenty-two percent lot coverage. So so it complies with section four point oh three C one C one of the code. And I think we, I think we satisfy the undue hardship standard because, again, to to base, you know, tens and tens and tens of thousands of dollars just to fix a safety issue and end up with something that we really can't use sort of is tough on the family, but if we can build something that is really useful for us for, you know, now and in the future, we'd really like to. So.
Does it impact any of your neighbors' views or sunlight or any of those things? Have you talked to any of them?
Yeah. So so the only neighbor that it really would affect in any meaningful way would either be Town Hall.
Right.
Or Ken and Molly. And I shared the plans with Ken back in, this would have been July now, and he said it looked lovely.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Related to that, Barb, as a matter of procedure, did the town notify the neighbors of the variance?
We did not, other than through the distribution of the agenda packet via the listservs.
Okay. It's not a normal procedure to distribute it to adjacent neighbors?
We don't.
I guess I was making an assumption.
Many variances, so there's not really a prescribed procedure in the code. Obviously, we do share information about the agenda packets fairly far and wide, but nothing targeted to the immediate neighbors. No.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Schrader?
I guess the the final thing I would note is that the Land Use Committee submitted a letter. I like to think of it as in support of the application, but it's going through the checklist that they use to analyze these kind of requests. And they said, you know, that their review was that this lost track of it. But, you know, ultimately, they said it's 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 behind the house. It wouldn't impact, you know, town property. It wouldn't impact anyone's view. And they they answered in the affirmative the question of whether it would, you know.
It says, will approval of the variance be in harmony with the general purposes of the ordinance and not contrary to public interest, which I think is taken right out of the wording on the ordinance.
Right. And they say yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Say yes. Are there any questions from other council members for Mr. Schrader while he's standing up here?
It appears that the land use or somebody, excuse me, said that the assessment that they provided on May seventeenth required a final evaluation, or I'm sorry, a survey of the property is provided by a licensed Maryland land surveyor. Was that done?
I think what that document was a preliminary analysis that they provided to me and they later did another analysis. But I had had prior to this, a Maryland land surveyor perform a survey. This was back in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
And so we have that that survey in the packet and that survey also shows the dimensions of the porch.
The proposed porch.
The proposed porch.
I think your construction drawings are going to have to show that survey with the new, the actual dimension, if it's ten foot or ten foot two or whatever. So I think that's what George is getting at is that it needs to be confirmed because all he can really do is pull information off the county GIS. So it's accurate within a couple inches, but not.
Well, this appears to be maybe the survey that you were talking about, right?
Yeah, I think that's right.
The February ten, twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, expires on February ten and stamped.
Oh, the expire. You're right. I'm sorry.
License.
And then I have, I do have construction drawings as well, but I, it's kind of hard to see.
Oh, it's from twenty twenty-one.
I have a giant printer, just a regular one, and I think the town does as well, but.
Is this gonna have a roof on it? Is it gonna be a screen porch?
Yeah, we'll have a roof and be screened in. You all know about the gnats around here.
Yeah. And the mosquitoes.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's all George is really getting at is that if you choose to move forward and if it's approved that and then you choose to move forward, that you would have a set of construction documents that would show that updated survey with the current date and then just that would be given to the town for, just for record, to show that the intent is met. So.
And it's not, just to make sure.
So because it, some of it may depend on what you're required to do for the county. Like you're going to have to have a county permit regardless. I'm not sure if they, if they take a boundary survey, for instance, for a permit, they may need a property survey that might show topography and what you're doing with gutters and downspouts. So I don't know if they would ask for that for this small thing, but just whatever level of survey the county requires that's updated with the current dates that goes on that permit is what what George is saying is that you would have something that's saying, yeah, we're putting it exactly here. It's at the inch.
And you're gonna keep the stormwater from the root of this addition on your property? So the plan includes taking that water and keeping it on your property?
Yeah, that's the plan. I think, I don't know exactly how they'll tie in the downspouts to our current gutter system, but yeah, the plan is to retain the water on our property.
Good. Any further questions? Are there, would someone like to make a motion, either for?
Sure. Make a motion in favor of the variance request relief from lot coverage.
If I may, Ron, is there something you wanted to?
Oh, yeah. Oh, well, that, I'm sorry. That's right. We have to give anyone else in the, in the audience an opportunity before I go to a motion. I have my apologies.
Is there anyone else online or in the room who would like to ask a question or make a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, does Barbara, our attorney, have any opinion about approving this in terms of precedent for other variances or do you think that this is something that is, will not create any detriment to the rest of the town?
And also with regard to past variances? I mean, what's, do we have any idea of the approval rate of variances?
There's only been one other variance during my almost three-year tenure, so these do not come up often. Ron, would you?
It was a lawsuit across the street at one point.
Well, I would like to ask maybe Stephen to point out, to to comment on that because for the Land Use Advisory Committee, the town did update its lot coverage ordinance a few years back. And as noted in the package here, it anticipated what kind of variances would be approved. And as this checklist points out, this, this particular situation does comply with the potential. We still have the right to approve or disapprove, but it does comply with what was anticipated for potential variances in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, since the lawsuit issue was mentioned, what what was that?
That was a very long time ago and before the current ordinance was in place.
It was like two thousand eight or something like that.
So it's not a really applicable.
It's like about two thousand four.
Okay, sounds good.
And there's somewhere, I can't remember exactly where it is or even if if it showed up in the parts that are printed here, but there is a specific line in the ordinance stating that no prior variances can be the basis for another. They all have to be done.
Stand on their own merit.
They had to be all case by case.
I don't remember where it is.
Yes, I saw that as well when I was reading the packet. The ordinance makes it clear that individual variances are not precedent setting.
Right, right. So yeah, under, under Maryland law, your decisions are not legally binding precedent on future decisions because they're administrative agency decisions and not appellate court decisions. And that said, if someone could try and argue that one decision is arbitrary and capricious when viewed against another decision. But as Barb noted, variance decisions are very rare in the town. And when I write the decision, I purposefully draft it so that it can be distinguished from future decisions to avoid any argument that the decision is arbitrary or capricious. For example, every request, as you did, is going to be unique based on the circumstances of that case. And that fact alone usually makes a case distinguishable. A variance request generally involves a two-step analysis by the council, as reflected in your code. You have to find a good faith basis exists for the request based on two primary criteria. One, that there's something unusual about the lot. And two, that actual condition creates a hardship or unusual practical difficulty, which is actually less than a hardship. So the applicant has testified as to what he believes are unusual practical difficulties for him and his family. And I'll say that the evidence could reflect that the lot is unusual because, as noted by your land use advisory, the lot is small compared to other lots in the town. It's a corner lot, subject to two front setbacks and it's non-conforming. Currently, the house encroaches into setbacks along Strathmore and Kennelworth. And the house is non-conforming to the existing lot coverage requirement. Main building right now is only allowed to be eighteen percent of the lot coverage and it's about nineteen point two. So, you know, this combination of conditions, small lot, corner lot, non-conforming to the two front setbacks and non-conforming to lot coverage, you know, renders any additional construction impossible practically without a variance. So, you know, based on all those conditions, I think the council would be on sound footing to grant this request and avoid any undesirable precedent because this is a rather unusual case.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Sure.
Exactly the type of case that that clause with the eighty-six hundred square foot was intended to cover because a long time ago, there were, as a group that worked on land use issues in the town and they were looking at something that the county was considering even for running across all of, I believe it was the R ninety zones. But it never went forward on the, totally on the county side, but it went through on the Garrett Park side to kind of find a sliding scale for these lots or between six thousand, I think it was, and eighty-six hundred. I think the six thousand is where that seventeen twenty comes from. And we do have some lots that are like fifty-eight hundred in town. So the, there's a little bit of a mismatch. The R ninety zoning that we're on has a nine thousand square foot minimum. Like if we were going to make a new nine, a new R ninety lot, not like we really have space to make many lots in this town, but we have a pretty high proportion of lots that are really sized more like the R sixty zone, which allows, you know, it's a smaller lot size. I think it's six thousand minimum and higher percentage of the lot coverage. So we're with with Garrett Park's goals of trying to have the houses be kept to a smaller footprint and have more open space that kind of all led to these things, making it really difficult on the, on the lots that are smaller than that nine thousand square foot. And this was the relief that was kind of built in years ago, just to make, make those smaller lots that were built in the fifties not be impossible to build on. I know that's a double negative, but does that make sense?
There is a tree that is growing very close to our house, uh, that we will have to take down. Um, uh, I, I think it's not native. That's one of the reasons why we waited so long to do this. I actually had a builder come out about four years ago and he told me, bring the tree down. And we said, we love the tree and, um, you know, we're new to town. Um, and five years later, we're, we're going, we need a bigger porch and the porch is dangerous. And so, you know, for those reasons, we've, we've really decided, you know, it's time to.
Sacrifice the tree.
Yeah, time to, time to, um, you know, expand the footprint of, of the porch, even though it's gonna, um, force us to bring that tree down.
So reiterate the motion unless there's other discussion and then seek a second.
I would second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to, are we okay in terms of our agenda? Ron, um, I didn't get further discussion from people in the audience when I asked.
Yes, yeah, you're ready to proceed.
All right. Uh, so we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded, all in fa- a motion to approve on the table, to approve the variance. And it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, as well as council member unanimously approved. So this motion, um, directs Ron to prepare a decision.
Correct.
On the variance, okay? So we're not actually, we don't have something that we're signing tonight. He will now, we've now given him direction and, um, he will send something back to be signed by the mayor, I believe.
Yes, and I will email it to you first so you can approve the language. That's just an administrative function to make sure what I've written captures what you've decided tonight. There's no more deliberation off the record, but administratively, you can approve the, the text of the decision and then it'll be signed by the mayor and then the permit can be issued after that.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Schrader. We appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you, Ron.
That was a long journey.
Thank you. I'll say good night too.
Thank you, Ron. Have a good night.
My pleasure.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is authorization for change order number one to SFMS LLC contract for the road and sidewalk improvements project, town, town manager Matthews.
Thank you. Um, as you all undoubtedly recall, back in May, the town council authorized execution of a contract with SFMS LLC for the road and sidewalks improvement project. Um, the project includes a number of components, um, including the milling, milling and paving work on sections of Cambria, um, a section of Kennelworth as well as Shelley Court. As I advised you back in August via text, um, and this is often what happens. When the milling work was completed on Cambria, Kennelworth and Shelley Court, all three, um, street areas revealed areas that required full depth patching due to subgrade failures. Um, this is something that you only find out once you actually mill the street down. Our town civil engineering firm, Clark Azar, um, met with the contractor, determined the dimensions of the required full depth patches. Um, because we basically had streets torn up and residents who were blocked from their homes, I notified you all by text of what had transpired. Um, and after consulting with me, we did authorize, um, SFMS LLC to proceed with the required, um, patching work. This was necessary so we could reopen the roadways as soon as possible and to avoid additional cost by having the contractor, um, be subject to a work stoppage. Um, because the need for the full depth patches was not something that the contractor could have anticipated when they prepared their bid. They are owed additional compensation for this work. Um, additionally, as you might recall, on the section of Kennelworth Avenue that was milled and paved, there were two speed bumps in that location, um, which obviously got removed when the street was milled. Uh, what we subsequently, um, came to light is that the replacement work for these two speed bumps was inadvertently excluded from the bid specifications. Uh, we did ask SFMS LLC to perform this work, put the speed bumps back in place that had been previously authorized. And consequently, they're also entitled to compensation for the speed bump work. Um, SFMS LLC submitted a change order in the amount of forty thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-nine cents. That change order pricing has been reviewed by Clark Azar and included in your agenda packet um, is a review letter from Jason Azar attesting to the appropriateness of this pricing.
And that change order, that amount includes the speed, replacing the speed bump and doing the patch.
That's correct.
Okay, great.
Um, as a, just as a reminder, uh, the project is being paid for with funds that we've received under the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, we will, even if this wasn't the funding source, we would need to do a budget amendment to reallocate funding within the capital budget uh, to accommodate the, this increased cost. Um, so I am asking for authorization this evening to sign change order one, uh, to our contract with SFMS LLC. So we can stay with paying them for the work they've.
I will move that we authorize the town manager to sign the change order number one for SFMS LLC contract for road and sidewalk above and beyond work.
Thank you, Phil. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion before we?
I can tell you that I witnessed some of them, including one that was dead in the middle of my driveway.
Let's say the worst one is in front of your house.
Exactly. And, and I can tell you that it needed it. So it wasn't a waste of money.
I would miss report.
Do we have to determine where the money's coming from in the budget or do you do that later?
Um, we can, uh, I would suggest doing it later, um, depending on your decision later this evening. Um, I guess from a practical standpoint.
We have capital contingency.
We have a contingency account.
Not like we're going.
Right, we have a contingency account and, um, kind of just anticipating kind of what will happen later this evening. We had budgeted for the pool wall repair to come out of ARPA funds, um, just kind of cleaning from the discussion earlier. Um, that, that will likely not be moving forward. Just as a reminder, um, we do have to obligate our ARPA funds by December thirty-first. That doesn't mean the work's completed, but a contract has to be signed. Um, just from a practical matter, if the discussion of the pool wall repair is going to continue into November or beyond, um, essentially we can take the funding, um, the ARPA funding that was dedicated to that and at least cover a, a good chunk of the change order, um, from that funding. And then you can always just reallocate funding, as Jerry Lee indicated, at a future day when you're ready to move forward with the pool wall repair. That funding can come from the contingency account.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye also, passed unanimously. Let's move on to change order number two. That was our added agenda item. Barb?
Okay, let me just bring that file up. Um, so as Jerry Lee is, is aware and I had communicated with you all with it via email yesterday, um, as of yesterday, I did not have a change order pricing in hand, but thankfully it came in late this evening. Um, as I mentioned at your last meeting, we have a, um, a location on Argyle Avenue that had been flagged by our engineering firm, um, that would eventually need a curb replacement. Um, as the CIP projects got moved around a little bit, um, Argyle was not being paved for, um, some time. And we're left basically with this deteriorated curb. It's in front of Todd O'Pryore's house. Initially, we thought if we were gonna have to do some work anyway, this might be a good time to go ahead and move to concrete curbs along that entire block, since that's eventually the plan. That turned out to be cost prohibitive. Um, we then sort of pivoted to look at asphalt for the entire block. That also, um, the pricing was just high, which can happen with change order pricing. Um, so last week, we did approach the contractor and said, you know, we just want you to basically address the immediate issue, which is in front of this one home. Um, we haven't, I've not had a chance to review their requested pricing, um, since it just came in with our engineering firm. But he had given me an outer limit of what he thought would be within the ballpark of reason and it does fall within that. Um, so SFMS has, um, proposed pricing of eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars, um, to basically install approximately seventy feet of curb in the forty-seven hundred block on Argyle.
But it's asphalt or coming?
It will be asphalt, which is what is in the rest of the block anyway.
Right, the, the, the remainder, I went and looked at it tonight just to be sure I understood the, the, it, it's all asphalt.
Correct.
And if we're not doing the whole street in concrete now, it wouldn't make sense to do concrete in front of one half.
The resident has, Todd has indicated that, not you Todd, the other Todd, um, that because the curb is so deteriorated, that water is not being channeled appropriately. So I do think this is something that should be addressed. Um, so thankfully we got the pricing in time and, and it kind of coincided with tonight's meeting.
And I think you said this, Barb, but I just want to reiterate, this particular stretch of roadway, Argyle Avenue is not on our capital improvement plan schedule for resurfacing and curbing until twenty thirty-four. Yeah, that's a long time so that this asphalt curb would hold up for, I hope, ten years.
We're hoping, yeah, we're hoping so. Um, you know, obviously the ideal thing is if you can, you know, kind of do a whole block at a time and you do it in conjunction with paving. Um, but we've had, um, some back and forth between the contractor and with, um, George Miller, our maintenance supervisor and our engineering firm. So we, we think this is a good interim solution to try to address the residents' concern.
And the rest of the asphalt term on Argyle is in good enough condition?
It is.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Where do you get the plan for the eventual paving to know that it's?
Um, it was distributed as, um, and I can certainly send it back out to you all. It was distributed, um, as it existed at that time, um, when we had the budget work session back in February, I think. Or that it might have been even before that. Um, streets are evaluated though annually. Obviously, if we have a mild winter, streets can last longer. If we have a horrible winter with a lot of freezing and thawing, basically conditions can deteriorate more quickly. So typically what I've done is have Clark Azar come out generally after the last snowfall, kind of take a look at the streets as we've been going into kind of the nuts and bolts of the budget process and just let me know if anything has changed. Currently, we're not scheduled to do any roadwork in FY twenty-six. Um, so that's part of the other reason I think that this has some urgency to it, is to try to address the concern while we do have someone here.
Looking at it more holistically may make sense in the future anyway, because I think it does transfer to concrete somewhere further down the line, I think near the corner.
It actually does, yes.
I got dragged over there by Dick Pratt years ago to go look at that specifically. And then it was for the stormwater kind of getting around that corner. Um, but a good point was raised by John King that maybe consider if it continues to, um, be used for sledding in the winter and maybe there's some more, a more of a rounded curb would make more sense. So the twenty thirty-four plan could, you know, consider, consider putting in curves on both sides of it. Like curved curves, you know, curved con- concrete curve on both sides.
One problem that I have with the whole asphalt curb is that they can get hit by plows and that usually knocks them out. And they're pretty weak and the one that we have there is suffering that problem. And so personally, I would vote against authorizing it unless we're gonna go to a concrete curb because I think it may not last ten years.
But are, so you're suggesting we would put a concrete curb in front of one house on the street?
Well, actually, if you go down a little bit further, there are some aprons and stuff already with, with them. And if you go up the other direction, we're about to put in concrete curb and some other stuff in front of the house on the corner of Argyle and Kennelworth.
Sounds like the contractor gave a really unfriendly price.
Uh, it's four seven zero nine.
Did you get a price for concrete?
We did, and then we priced, um, so for the entire block, um, if they were doing it, I was just trying to pull that up on my emails, um, for asphalt curb for the entire block, it, it translated out to seventy-eight dollars. This is asphalt for seventy-eight dollars per lineal foot, my recollection, and I'm trying to find Jason, Jason's email, I believe that, that ended up being about a hundred and ten dollars a lineal foot. Um, so it, it's basically, we would be paying almost, yeah, I think he basically said we would be paying almost double what he thought to be reasonable for concrete for the entire block.
So it looks like the transition, looking on, thank goodness for, for Google Earth. They are. Yes.
Yeah.
For Google Street View. Um, is there a house between this house and Anne Sun's home? No.
Yes, two houses, two Chevy houses.
They share a driveway that has, has a concrete apron, right?
It does.
So it does look like that is where the transition to concrete occurs. So I take that back. It, it wouldn't be that out of the ordinary to do concrete there. So I'm sorry, Barb, what, what did you say the price was for concrete for the whole street?
Trying to find that, my, I'm going off memory here, but I believe it was around a hundred and ten dollars a lineal foot.
Which total to?
And that would be both sides. Yeah, let me see if I can, uh, quickly. There's been so much back and forth about this one area.
Understood. So, uh, while Barb's looking that up, it seems, seems like Phil and I were just, um, talking about this beforehand. We have options. One is to do this one house with asphalt. Um, and to give that approval tonight to Barb. Another option would be to do a more holistic solution and to incorporate it into whatever the next roadworks contract we would have. Because, um, but that would not allow us to use ARPA funding for it. We'd be taking it out of our regular budget. Um, third option would be to ta- do the larger holistic project using the change order pricing. But of course, we, we want to hear what that amount would be. Those are three options. So was there a fourth option we discussed?
Do nothing, I suppose.
Do nothing and wait until the next time this road comes up for full paving and curbing. So those are the four options on the table.
The first one with, the first one you guys talked about was potentially do it not, we don't have paving scheduled next year, but the year following.
Right.
Whatever the next.
Yeah, just like we did this year, we did several small projects in one contract. So say we're, I, I'm not, I'm just making this up, right? Say Chesapeake Street were the road that's up for paving next year. You could do the contract for Chesapeake Street and incorporate this curbing, not the whole road, but just the curbing as one contract so that we could get a full competitive.
I found Jason Azar's comments about this. This is, I'm just reading it directly. This is for concrete. This is much higher than expected. It is nearly a hundred and ten dollars um, per linear foot. This is extremely high. I do not think it is worth it to do this work for this price. Concrete curb and gutter should be in the fifty dollars per lineal foot range with some additional for prep. If they were in the sixty dollar per lineal foot range, I would accept it, but this is not even close. And then he basically suggested that we pivot to asphalt.
Is the contractor who's doing the work up Waverly with the concrete curbs, is that more like fifty or sixty dollars a square foot?
I believe so, yeah. They were by, I mean, it's a little bit hard to, we'd have to look at it, but it was all part of one bundle project.
Right.
Um.
It's two different contractors though, right?
No, it's all one.
Could be the same.
It's all one contractor.
But they were all, did you just say that the asphalt was gonna be seventy-eight dollars a lineal foot?
I think that's correct.
I think that's what you just said. That's what I might have missed.
That's correct.
So basically that's more expensive, like fifty percent more expensive than the estimated cost for doing a concrete.
What concrete should be. I mean, change order pricing is generally not the best because, you know, they.
Been there, seen that, so yep, I know.
Question is, when are we next doing road work?
We're, yeah, at the, as things stand today, we would not be doing road work until fiscal year twenty-seven. Um, I, I can tell you the homeowner is concerned, would really like something done, and I don't think his request is unreasonable.
But we don't have a bid at this point for a change order bid for just the one home for concrete, right? Didn't we just get it for the whole street?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, the rest of the curbing is asphalt, so we would not probably do concrete in just that one area. It would aesthetically just look kind of odd. Um, you know, the other part of it is just the mobilization cost to come and, I mean, asphalt's a little bit easier to maneuver than concrete. Um, from a timing standpoint, I'm just a reminder, asphalt plants close in roughly a month. Um, so generally in the mid, mid to late November, all the asphalt plants close up.
Is there any explanation for why the guy's doing a fifty dollars a square foot for one place in town and wants a hundred dollars a square foot for another place in town?
Um, I mean, their change order pricing is what it is. Um, I suspect it's probably one of two things. One is if you're a contractor on site and someone's asking you to do something else, um, you obviously have an advantage in that because, you know, we're trying to get this done. Um, the other part, sometimes I've seen, I'm not saying this is the case with SFMS, um, they've been very patient in terms of rolling through with us these different options. But oftentimes contractors basically just want to get the work done that they currently are, are contracted to do. And they're really not that interested sometimes to actually take on additional work.
Worth getting another bid from another contractor to do this concrete? I mean, it seems like if we want to move from, you know, we're trying to get aprons to be concrete, we're trying to, you know, we've got a lot of deteriorating asphalt curbs. It seems like we should kind of say we're gonna replace asphalt with concrete.
That is the plan. I mean, I think particularly as we're doing larger areas, I think this is just such an isolated location. Um, I think we started off very ambitious, hoping we could go ahead and transition to concrete and it just became, the cost was just excessive.
But this is even more than the cost of concrete, it sounds like. The asphalt is seventy, you said. But this is even more than the cost of concrete, it sounds like. The asphalt is seventy, you said the reasonable cost for concrete would be fifty.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, perennial.
Just an unfriendly change order price.
Thousand-dollar municipal job?
Not at this probably late in the construction season, I would say probably not.
They'll charge so much in mobilization for a small job that it makes it infeasible. But I'm curious, like, is it worth having George Miller take a look around town or anybody else that is familiar with them to see if there are any similar curb projects that could be grouped that are more stormwater related? And maybe if there's, maybe if there's a block worth, but it's in three different locations, might make, make enough to make a twenty twenty-six bid be worthwhile or twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I mean, I think that.
Argyle. Definitely on Argyle, there's some up the, I forget whose house it is, but it's.
Yeah, I mean, George is on vacation as of Wednesday, he's on a week, so, um, yeah, I found the, the cost for, this was two hundred and fifty-four feet of curb and gutter um, for the entire block. Um, yeah, and this was concrete, the cost was twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars.
That's like a hundred dollars.
Yeah, it was about a hundred and ten.
And I'm sorry, what would, was the scope that the twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fourteen would cover?
I'll just read it.
In, in plain language of description.
Yeah, basically, they were um, installing approximately two hundred and fifty-four feet of curb and gutter for the forty-seven hundred block of Argyle. Um, the scope of work would include removing and excavating approximately two hundred and fifty-four feet um, in depth, compact the existing base, provide and install basically compacted concrete. Um, I'm sorry, providing compaction basically for the service and then provide and install um, concrete with the same color that we've used up everywhere else.
Concrete, not asphalt?
This, this is the one I have all up right now is the concrete, since that seems to be what people are more interested in. I can try to find.
And that's two hundred and fifty-four feet would cover both sides of the roadway or just the one?
It was just the one, just the one side.
So all the way down to the existing concrete or?
It was everything, yeah, in the forty-seven hundred block, basically.
And, and what's the total cost for that?
Uh, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars.
And what's the cost of the replacement of just the asphalt curb?
Just setting in the one location, Lisa?
Yeah.
That was
Like eight thousand?
Eight thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars. So like I say, our engineer has not reviewed this pricing, but it's in the ballpark of what he told me, you know, might be.
Yeah, but that asphalt wouldn't, yeah, the asphalt wouldn't include the concrete gutter either, so.
Correct.
You'd have to tear it out. That's one thing. It's gonna be pay me now or pay me later because eventually we're gonna redo that street, and when we do, we're gonna put in concrete gutter, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, Jason's initial thought is before we would basically pay practically double what he thought was reasonable is, you know, see if there was, you know, other work, which we can't think of any right now, that might develop over the course of the next fiscal year. You know, and try to combine it with something, but we.
And not do anything.
That was kind of where he started, then we sort of pivoted to asphalt. Um, you know, I, I do feel obligated to say that, you know, that the property owners are concerned and feel like, you know, that this, the fact that the curb is deteriorated basically is having water not channel properly. And so that is a concern.
Yes.
The difference between asphalt and cement in terms of the life of the project?
The life of the concrete, you mean?
Or concrete, yeah.
The expected useful life?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, co- concrete is much, much stronger.
I mean, you can hit it with a plow and knock asphalt out, and that is what we believe happened in this case, and it over in Argyle, and I'm sorry, I forget. It's the first house coming from Kellworth, um.
The Shawaker's?
Nope, not the Shawaker's. Wait a second, I say Argyle, I'm saying Argyle, I'm, it's the next street over. But anyway, I digress.
No, basically, Phil is correct. If you hit asphalt, especially the right way with a plow, it, it crumbles.
Right.
It's basically asphalt, it's really, the curb is just kind of extruded, almost like a Tootsie Roll, and it's like glued on the edge of the road where the concrete has kind of formed all um, and hardened together.
Looks a lot better.
It's also a much stronger material.
Oh, yeah.
So let's review our options. We have the new do nothing at this time, alternative, not do nothing ever, but at this time, and then revisit in the spring at, um, when um, the maintenance crew looks around at what other work might need to be done to, to bundle this project. Uh, that's one option. Second option is to do the single house with asphalt. Third option is to do the whole one side of the street for the bid amount by the current contractor of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fourteen. So those are the three main options on the table for us. Um.
There's a potential subset option for one of them, like if, hopefully, we can figure out the pool wall by November or December. I think a lot of contractors that can do that kind of work, um, especially with one of the ways I might propose it, they do curbs as well, so it might be joinable with that kind of a contract to make it worthwhile. If we can do that over the spring.
If we do concrete, we don't have the mutation of the asphalt plans closing in November.
Yeah. Right. Usually, you do the concrete outside of the dead winter if you can too, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, either way, we're looking at the spring if we don't act on it.
Yeah, I mean, you can do concrete in cold temperatures. They did it in Howard County, did it in front of our house, but then you're likely, you'll see like blanket, warming blankets and things like that, uh.
But those are the, yeah, any, any motions to be put out?
Well, I would move that we, uh, well, that we attempt to get them, try and negotiate with them, otherwise that we put in, install a concrete curb down that side of Argyle. I think it's gonna be a pay me now or pay me later. And I think it's much more durable in one whack, and basically, we just threw eight thousand dollars out the window. So I'm gonna move that we do concrete.
So you're, you're moving for negotiating the twenty-seven. Would you like to put a do not exceed amount on the negotiation?
I, I think there's a very good chance they're not going to budge on it.
They're not gonna.
That's my sense.
Yeah.
Well.
They don't budge to be acceptable.
Then we accept the twenty, I'll, I would say, how about a do not exceed of twenty-seven or whatever that, twenty-eight thousand, whatever that number was.
Twenty-seven, eight, eight, one, four.
So let's make it around twenty-eight thousand.
But it sounds like our engineer's saying it's an egregious number.
It is.
It is an egregious number.
I hate to.
So you're saying to make the egregious number?
Yeah, is there anyone who would second that motion?
I would not.
I would not.
I would not.
Okay, well, so much of that.
It might.
It was a try, Phil.
Let it try.
I might suggest like if the, if it could be negotiated or told the contract, it could be shown their linear foot cost and the other parts of the project and say, hey, we're, you know, willing to add this on it, you know, maybe twenty or twenty-five percent premium on top of the other, because you have to stick around, then maybe you see if they um, agree to that. Sounds like Barb is doubtful that they will do it, but I think that would be fair. I just feel like it's, the town's kind of being, attempted to be taken advantage of. They're assuming that we're desperate to do this.
So the description of that potential motion would be to give a do not exceed amount that would be more along lines of, with a percentage, some, some amount below the twenty-seven that's more reasonable, but still gives them an up charge again, again, what their currently linear foot charges are. And then our secondary position is if we can't get to that do not exceed by negotiation, we do the review in the spring. It's not like we would put this work off forever. We'd look for an opportunity to include it in an RFP in the spring.
I think the.
Yeah.
So what kind of number is reasonable on the twenty-eight thousand dollar bid?
Can you do the math on that?
Twenty-eight.
Uh, I think Barb would have to see, Barb, I'm assuming they have a.
If it's, they usually charge fifty, and they're charging a hundred, but what is it in cubic?
It's seven.
It's lineal feet.
Lineal feet.
Do they have a, do they have a set number in their contract, the existing contract?
Hmm.
Do they have a set number for the curbs in the other contract, in that current contract?
Bring it up. Um, so it's two hundred and fifty-four lineal feet. Jason was saying it should be fifty to sixty if he went. Yeah, he said even sixty if he wanted to kind of go on the high side.
We even went to seventy to allow them their up charge.
Yeah, that's closer to seven, seventeen thousand seven hundred and eighty.
But they've already told us that, um, they want seventy-eight just to do the asphalt.
Yeah, I mean, I think probably it's part of what.
No, like, they're talking about seventy-eight hundred for the asphalt, not seventy-eight a lineal foot, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think the one, for just in front of the one home, um, and in some cases, it's kind of a matter of how they're going to have to form it and to provide stability, they're gonna have to backfill. Um, yeah, so just for the one property with asphalt is eight thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars. I think some of this, what we may be seeing is that they're kind of wanting to wrap up the project, and so providing high pricing, um, you neither view it as trying to gouge us, or you can view it as they may be trying to give us a disincentive because they'd really like to finish up the work they're contracted for and move on.
Do I have a motion?
I would, yeah, I would go back to them with that proposal, Barb, and if they don't accept it, I would wait till the spring and then bundle it with some other things, but I don't think we should do the asphalt now.
Okay, would you like to form that in a motion?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. Yeah.
It's your motion.
Okay, so we have, all right, so we have a motion on the table by Lisa with the, um.
To go, for Barb to go back.
And not to exceed what amount?
Seventy dollars, whatever we just said. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you're interested in doing it, I mean, there's, you know, there's some incidental cost beyond just the
Right.
price, so that comes out to seventeen thousand seven hundred and eighty.
What about a twenty thousand dollar?
Right, I was gonna say, you could just round it off to twenty thousand. Okay.
That's fine, great. It's also down a steep, steep hill.
Right, in this array, no.
Okay.
Can we, we can set everything out for bid for the next bundle of work. We would do that anyway, right?
Right, we would, I mean.
Right, it's just that we didn't have a clear set schedule of things to be bid next spring, but.
There's nothing else ongoing that we could rebid.
No, not at this time.
Between now and.
Right.
Yeah, um, as I said, you know, right now, it's a question mark whether we'd have any roadwork that we're bidding out in FY twenty-six.
We can make some.
All right, so Lisa had a motion on the table. Todd seconded it with the twenty thousand not to exceed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I. Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, next item on our action agenda is adoption of resolution number two oh two four dash four, twenty twenty-four dash four. Adopting a travel policy for Garrett Park elected officials and staff members, Town Manager Matthews.
Our team effort has been to sort of, you know, review our code, review our policies and procedures, and just look for areas where there may be um, kind of gaps in what traditionally exists in, for most governmental entities, and one of those would be um, having an actual travel policy in, in place. Um, so the resolution that is before you this evening, um, basically, as Jerry Lee mentioned, would adopt a travel policy that would be applicable to any town elected officials or staff members who are traveling on town business. Um, if you've had the opportunity to review it, um, the policy outline standards, um, pretty much formalizing what is our existing practice in terms of mileage ream. It's our travel that would be further away outside the state in terms of um, how the mode of transportation should be um, selected, what type of documentation is required for meals or other incidentals, and what type of expenses would be ineligible for reimbursement. Um, the draft policy that's before you um, mirrors sort of what both Kayla and I have seen in other jurisdictions where we have worked.
I'll just make a comment that I think is well thought out and seems to cover most of the um, contingencies that came to mind for me for a travel policy. Is there any other discussion?
I mean, it wasn't terribly clear to me, like, who approves whether or not somebody would travel to um, council members and or staff members, just take it upon themselves. I assume not to say that they're gonna go to Annapolis. I assume either the mayor or the town manager would, I.
Yeah, I mean, it's determined by the budget, so um, you know, basically, I have included, um, you know, a little bit of money for either Kayla or I to attend, um, kind of what is our national professional organization. I've been sending her generally um, more than myself, just because I think that's good professional development for her. In terms of, um, you know, the mayor and town council, you know, as you know, we send out, um, you know, just any announcement as far as conferences for the Maryland Municipal League, because that's typically what you all would attend. I know four of you attended this past year. I think historically, I've budgeted for either three or four people, not knowing, particularly when you have elections, who's gonna want to attend uh, for the summer MML conference, and we usually budget for um, one member who might want to attend the fall Maryland Municipal League Conference. That's kind of focused largely on legislative matters.
I remember what's happened in the past and kind of what's typically anticipated. I guess my question was more about, like, what if there was something that's different than that? Like, say, there was a conference in California, um, like, who, who would approve, like, if, say, you know, somebody?
Yeah. If somebody wanted to go to the National League of Cities Conference, which typically is not held here in DC, it's held across the country. Um, it would really become a budgetary matter, so that's not something we've typically budgeted. So in that instance, it hasn't come up during my tenure, but you know, it would probably just be a case of um, the elected official just sort of bringing it back to the group, because it probably, it would require in all likelihood some transfer funds.
Okay, so it would probably be like an agenda item at a meeting like this and then discuss it through. Okay.
Hasn't come up, but that, that's my initial thought.
Yeah, but it could.
Yeah.
Okay, um, do you think it's adequate, Stephen, to not put any explicit language about who approves?
I wonder if we shouldn't, maybe to just say.
I mean, there is, section one general guideline says the town manager administers the policy, but it does not say.
Yeah.
It doesn't say whether the manager or the mayor approves.
Yeah, I mean, we could say that the, we could add a statement along the lines of the mayor shall approve town manager travel, the town manager can approve, approve staff travel, and council members, the council can budget.
Approve.
Well, you know, the budget, if it's outside of the budget, the council has to approve a budget amendment.
Attendance.
Right.
That sounds fair.
Just to make it really simple, straightforward, I think that's a good point, Stephen.
So any other amendments or concerns, questions?
So, um, I guess there could, is there anything that needs to be said, done about if the town is paying for it directly on the town's credit card or whatever?
Um, we try to do that already to the extent we can. Um, that doesn't always work, because like some ho- some hotels, I'm thinking of, I, I went to a professional conference last year. Truthfully, I didn't worry about it. I think the town credit card basically was a deposit, and then I just paid for everything personally and then submitted it.
Yeah, it's the same thing I did with.
Yeah, um, we, we generally do, like, for those of you who went to MML in June, um, I, I know, Phil, I believe there was a slight hiccup with your hotel, but generally with the other hotels, we just paid for all the hotel expenses upfront.
Right.
We had tried to do for you, and then there was some, some kind of confusion on the hotel's part.
Yeah, it was no big deal.
Stayed at the wrong company's hotel.
No, I actually didn't.
Yeah.
But, no, okay, so I just wanted to check, that's all.
Okay, any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion or approval or disapproval.
Motion for approval of the travel guidelines.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been.
Yeah, I think because this is a resolution, if the motion could be to adopt the resolution.
Okay, so could you clarify to, as amended?
As amended, the resolution, the motion is to adopt a resolution uh, of a town, of Garrett Park travel policy.
I'll second.
I think Phil.
I agree, seconded it, actually.
That's all right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous for the policy. Thank you, Barb. Next up is, back to Barb again with the town manager's report.
You'll be tired of me very soon. Um, never. There's a couple items, so included in your agenda packet is the, to ignore the word final, that was a typo, uh, the financial report for the month of September. Um, we're still relatively early in the fiscal year, so um, you know, not a lot to kind of write home about, but did want to call even attention that on September nineteenth, we received the annual tax duplication payment from Montgomery County. Just as a reminder, uh, tax duplication payments are payments made by the county as a partial reimbursement for services the county does not provide, but for which the county receives taxes from Garrett Park properties, in our case. Um, the amount of the FY twenty twenty-five payment was a hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars, and it shows up in account three point two from Montgomery County. Um, the budgeted amount for the FY twenty twenty-five tax duplication payment uh, was a hundred and two thousand five hundred and eight, just as a reminder, as the budget process was moving forward. Um, both former mayor Welch and myself both um, advocated for a county payment for park maintenance. As you may recall, the county has struggled to figure out how to handle new payments, because the payments that are currently paid to municipalities date back to the nineteen eighties, and no one knows what the formula actually was. They've just been adjusted by the cost of inflation. Um, so that's been the major stumbling block. The um, approximately additional thirty thousand dollars that was unbudgeted, um, we received due to the advocacy of. And we received due to the advocacy of council member Kate Stewart on our behalf. This is likely a one-time payment. The issue has been kicked back to the Montgomery County chapter of the Maryland Municipal League and the county executive office staff to try to determine a methodology. There actually was one talked about early on in my tenure in the state. I have been in touch with one of the offices for the chapter, and I'm gonna reach out to the chapter president tomorrow to see where things stand. I think part of the difficulty we may find ourselves in is that the municipalities who are getting payments, there's no guarantee that if a methodology is developed, they're going to continue getting the amount they are currently receiving. So, we, we may actually be pushing a little bit of a boulder uphill with our own fellow municipalities. I was talking to one of my colleagues who was on a task force with me when Ike Leggett was county executive, and this was one of the issues that was discussed. This was brought up by Montgomery Park. And I was like, hey, don't you remember, this was the formula we sort of talked about, blah, blah, blah. And he basically honestly said, he goes, look, we may end up losing if that formula goes into effect, so we're not really pushing this issue.
But we're a thirty thousand dollar ahead of budget.
Right, for this year.
Right.
So, you know, like you say, I think it, we're just gonna have to try to wind our way through that process. I think what's ended up happening is when the county council was trying to address some longstanding issues with tax duplication as a whole back in twenty twenty-two, I believe it was. They formalized in that their legislation, the municipalities who were receiving the park payment. So they've, the county executive office staff for the past couple of years has sort of pointed to that as the reason to kind of kick Garrett Park to the curb. There's also another provision, though, in the county code that says that any municipality can petition every year, and it kind of outlines the process. So Kate Stewart did intervene on our behalf. I feel like I think the executive's office didn't know what to do with it. We'll just have to kind of see whether, what the chapter does with this issue. But we at least have thirty thousand dollars this year that we wouldn't have had but for council member Stewart.
Seems like a pretty simple solve, that they would just refuse to solve, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the simple solve, without boring you, is it, it would mirror basically what the county process is for the road maintenance payment. The, but the county, what had been talked about way back when, when Ike Leggett was county executive on his task force is, and it was probably the, one of the few issues that the county staff and the municipal staff actually agreed to. It was to basically have the Montgomery, the county park system categorize each of the municipal parks according to their structure. They have different categories of parks. They already track their own per acre maintenance cost. I know they do that. And it would basically be kind of a rolling three-year average. So I, I don't think the methodology, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I think the question will become what kind of support we actually get from other municipalities who are already getting something. And do they stand to win or lose if it's actually formalized?
Good luck, hopefully it turns out in our favor.
Yeah.
It's good to have that versus the zero we've gotten in recent years.
Yeah. Our year-to-date investment revenues may look low compared to the same time period for the last year. As of September thirtieth, we had received four thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars compared to twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. We do have a significant portion of our investment portfolio is with Montgomery County Investment Pool. They calculate earnings on a quarterly basis, and as of the time that this report was prepared, we had not received that earnings report for the quarter that just ended. But certainly, I think we are starting to see rates come down. So, you know, we will see some adjustment in our investment earnings, and that was accounted for in the budget. We did expect them to go lower than they had been. And then, and lastly, just as of September thirtieth, the unexpendited balance of our funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act was three hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
So what?
So actually obligated.
Obligated.
Right, so, you know, obviously we've talked about some change order, you know, you approved change order one, you know, obviously we'll have some continuing conversations with SFMS about change order two potentially. If anyone went into ten place on Sunday, you would have seen a scaffold. We did undertake the, the painting of the interior of the building. That came in, it was budgeted at twenty thousand, it came in at just under ten. So we have some savings from that.
That painter.
Yeah.
So they don't get out of the truck for ten.
Yeah, well, we use turnkey properties again, obviously Danny is a resident. Part of that was trying to find, Mayor Keller and I discussed this. Having a contractor who was willing to work around the restaurant's opening schedule, willing to work around when people are coming into the post office, someone local who understands those dynamics, it worked out very well. So that's really all I was gonna share about the financial report unless there's any other question.
Do you think you're gonna be able to get three hundred thousand dollars spent before the end of the year?
Either spent or obligated. I don't think there'll be any issue at all.
Right.
I'm not concerned about that.
What do we have obligated? Oh, I'm sorry. What do we have obligated right now?
The SF, the remainder of the SFMS contract, so we've only paid them, we made a progress payment for the milling and paving work on the three streets. And we withheld some retainers. There was some minor corrective work they needed to do in a few areas on Canalworth. With the approval of change order one, I will sign that and send that back to them tomorrow. I, I anticipate that there'll be a invoice coming around pretty quickly for that. They have not built anything to date for the Waverly sidewalk, and obviously there's still the reconfiguration of the intersection.
So what, what are you thinking, like?
Like what's due to them over the next couple of months?
Right.
If you'd like, I can look it up.
Roughly.
Before you do that, Barb, what, what's, can we just define what obligated means? Does not.
Right, so obligated.
By having an executed contract.
Yeah, obligated means you have a signed purchase order, you have a, doesn't mean you have to have the work completed. It just means that you have to have something under contract and by some mechanism, whether that's a purchase order, which we don't do, you know, assigned price quotation. Just as a reminder, under your consent agenda tonight, you did approve the purchase of a replacement pickup truck that is being paid for with ARPA funds.
Okay, that sounds like.
What else? I mean, I'm just curious.
Well, but by the time the truck is outfitted, that's close to sixty thousand dollars right there. I'd have to look up how much Waverly, but the total contract for SFMS, including the change order you approved, so just assuming for the moment nothing happens on Argyle at all, would be roughly about two hundred and eighty-five thousand. We've, we've only paid them a hundred and seventy to date.
So the hundred and seventy's out of there.
The remainder goes under our.
So there's still probably an extra sixty or eighty in our.
And that's why it's not invoiced at all.
So, um, Barb, could we maybe just make a request that at the November council meeting, we have a full accounting of our obligations against ARPA so that we can review where we stand? Yeah.
Yeah, yes, just make sure if we have to do any.
Right, in case.
Last minute obligation.
To, a, a, anything that's, I mean, the capital ones have been where we've been focusing, but if we need to, we could go beyond capital funding.
Yeah, my, my initial thought, I haven't talked to Mary Ruckair accountant yet, but should we find it, we're approaching December thirty first, what we could do, it doesn't fit quite as neatly as I would like, and I can get over that, but, you know, we have the ARPA funds budget as capital. We've done, I just signed off on a check last week for thirty-six thousand dollars and some change in tree work. We could basically take some expenses that, because as long as the fiscal year is open, it's not an issue. And essentially do a journal entry as needed to take expenses that were paid for out of general town operating funds and essentially do a, a journal entry to book that instead to ARPA.
Okay, um, do the tree work contracts meet the contracting requirements that the ARPA funds require?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Okay, good. Well, I, I think if, if we could have that as an agenda item for November, that'll be helpful for everyone.
Yeah, I think if you all, if you just take, if you can just look at the capital budget page for a moment, this might be helpful. I've got a meeting tomorrow with the lumber and light, which was a design firm, just to go over some financial aspects of that. There were a few things in the town office, such as we've not ordered blinds yet, for example. Because I just wanted to make sure I was very clear on where we are at. Obviously, that project, we, as you know, got hit with considerable permitting-related issues. The seventy-five thousand dollars, which is thirty-five point three A, that's the pickup truck you approved this evening. There was also another piece of equipment that I needed to check with George to see if he still intended to buy. The facility's pen place. Part of that was the painting, part of that is the fire alarm system, which I need to work with George on. Obviously, the streets and curbs is going over. We're already about forty-some thousand dollars over because of the change order you approved tonight with the possibility of more. And the sidewalk work is the ninety-four thousand, two hundred and forty-five. That was the section of SS, SFMS's bid tied specifically to Waverly.
Can I have some additions for the lighting costs in that project, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's gonna become a matter of timing, candidly, how quickly that can be done. And then the other public spaces, there's a little bit of a charge, which was Clark Azar, but that was the money that was dedicated for the pool wall repair, which may or may, may not be going forward. But as I mentioned, the ARPA funding is very flexible, so my initial thought is, you know, if it looks like we're, we have some funds that are unobligated, if we just do a journal entry and take something large like the, the, the tree work that's been done this year.
Okay, anything else for the town manager's report?
I was just gonna let you all know very quickly is that we did, as you know, finalize the the new lease within the kitchen doing business as black market. It's, everything's fully executed, including the letter amendment that addressed any change in operating hours. As you may recall, the effective date of the new lease was July first, so the restaurant did, you know, they continued paying, they just paid at the old rate. They have paid the residual amounts that were owed for the months of July, August and September. They started paying the new amount in October, and they also have remitted a check for the increased security deposit, which was.
What's the, who, what's the amount of the new lease versus the old lease, like the net increase of dollars?
Um, if you can just give me.
Roughly.
Yeah, I can just tell you, Lisa, because I had sent something to their, their person about that.
I mean, you can just round it up.
Yeah, no, it's easy enough to do. So what they had been paying us was, uh, let's see. Let me one minute. So they're now paying us eleven thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and ten cents. They had, yeah, a month. That includes their share of the building expenses, which were estimated. They had been paying six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents, so the difference per month is four thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty cents.
That's about forty grand a year, forty-five grand a year.
Yeah.
That's a real number.
Yeah, fall leaf collection is starting this week. We've already talked at great length about the road and sidewalk improvements project. I do not have a firm start date yet for reconfiguration of the intersection, and they'll be getting, I think they're trying to focus on getting Waverly done. And then just my normal shout out to our maintenance team for all the work that they're doing. They, since I wrote this memo, they actually have finished the planting in, on the Grotto property. And that is a sole focal point for the fall tree planting work, was the Grotto property and our efforts to kind of begin the process of restoring its wooded look after we removed all the invasives. George Miller, our maintenance supervisor, is continuing to kind of be our boots on the ground with supervising the work of the contractor for the road and sidewalk improvements project. I bet he's also overseeing the contractual interior painting work, but that's now done as of Sunday, and that concludes my report.
Any further questions for Barb?
I just had one.
Uh, excuse.
She's on vacation.
Stephen had a question.
Oh, um, but do you wanna knock that one out first, or?
Kayla's on vacation, she'll be back Wednesday.
And then on the, um, the revenues page, investment earnings, like I saw EOI actuals for FY twenty twenty-four was one fifteen, it was higher than I kind of recollected that it would be, like, I'm just curious if I'm understanding that correct, like you're pooling all of the unused capital that the town has, and then earning interest on that through the Montgomery County program, but curious, like, what's the rate per year that kind of has been earning, I think, like some have fretted about like losing our purchasing power, but it feels like that's a pretty healthy return on.
Yeah.
Sitting idle.
Yeah, the rates obviously always adjust. But trying to think the last quarterly report we got, we have some in CD, so it's a little bit more liquid. If this is the last, the last one I got, Stephen, the rate for the fourth quarter of fiscal twenty twenty-four was five point four percent.
Yeah, so that's like higher than inflation, okay?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yes.
Okay, any further questions for Barb? Alright, thank you very much, Barb. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. This is a discussion on the proposed ordinance amending chapter seven of the town code to authorize the town council to adopt specifications for parking and access driveway facilities, add criteria for consideration of permit application and limit curb entrances to one per property, except under special circumstances. Town Manager Matthews.
Yeah, so this is, you've had kind of two discussions in depth about this matter. The first was back in June, as you likely recall. And the major focal point of that discussion was the current provision in the town code about providing a reimbursement for a residence construction of a new driveway apron. You also discussed on that date and agreed to formalize the town's current practice of requiring new driveway aprons to be constructed in concrete. At your last meeting, you considered introduction of an ordinance, as Geri Lee indicated, that would have been chapter seven of the town code. During that discussion, it was quite robust, there were a number of issues came up, and you all deferred introduction of the ordinance to allow for further discussion of those matters. You also talked about having the proposed ordinance be reviewed by the various town committees before it came back to you for introduction. So since your meeting in September, I had the opportunity to have some communication with both our town attorney and our civil engineering firm. And also included in your agenda packet, and there's very minimal changes today pending tonight's discussion, but is an updated version of the draft ordinance. So one of the issues that came up at, at the September discussion was clarifying the use of sidewalk in section seven twelve A and seven twelve D. As you'll note, this is in the red line version that's attached, sidewalk has been changed to walkway in both of those sections. In seven twelve E, the prior reference to town manager was changed to the town council. As you may recall, you talked a little bit about, you know, anyone who wanted to essentially, you know, ask for a special consideration. You liken that to a variance process, like you experienced earlier this evening. So that reference was changed in seven twelve E to town council. And that specifically relates to approval of a second entrance basically could be considered by you all. Then we get into a long laundry list of issues, which was more points that our town attorney and our town engineering firm kind of responded back in terms of some of the issues that you all talked about. So one of the questions that came up at your last meeting was the language in, in seven fourteen A of the current code, and this had to do with streets that are basically twenty-six feet wide, and there was some question about that. That entire section in section seven fourteen basically relates to new streets that are being constructed. So it, it, it isn't really relevant to any existing town streets, but if we were to construct a new one, I suspect, as does our town attorney and Jason Azar, is this language probably at some point mirrored what might have been in the county code regarding new construction? Particularly as subdivisions were basically being constructed in the county, is our best guess. One of the other issues that came up was, should we be allowing permeable materials to be used in the construction of a driveway apron? Jason Azar recommends against doing so, allowing permeable pavements in the right of way, basically due to increased maintenance and possible failure. His professional opinion was that during repaving operations, there were, there's a strong likelihood that there would be damage to any aprons that are constructed with permeable materials. Geri Lee, did you wanna talk about these issues as they come up, or do you want me just to kind of run through them, or what's, what's gonna be best for you all?
Well, just a reminder of where we are in this process, as Barb said, we've discussed this now twice. And one of the things that we agreed upon at the first meeting was that we wanted to make sure we, we didn't rush this through, we wanted to give plenty of visibility. We wanted to give plenty of visibility to the town, to residents, give them a chance to hear about this through the bugle, through our conversations. I don't know that we've done anything special to get this out there, other than through the bugle.
No, we haven't. I think mainly because. I think we're, what I had recommended and why this is on your agenda tonight is I think before we. Start circulating it to committees or more widely, it'd be helpful to make sure it's in a form that you are a little bit happier with. So that we're not having people comment on something that then turns around as subsequently updated.
And I think that's fair, yes, and we did agree, I believe, at the first meeting, that when we had a draft that we were. Ready, we would circulate it to, I think we agreed on three committees, land use advisory, historic preservation and arboretum.
Yeah, that takes the pressure off, I'm feeling like it's imminent, so.
Right.
Like I said, the soonest we would introduce this in November, and it's at least a month. After that, that it would.
Right.
Be approvable.
I think possibly depending on how the discussion goes tonight, November might even be early, you may be looking at something twenty-five potentially, if you wanted to go through the committees first.
Maybe a good way to pro, to do this one process is to just give each council member an opportunity to ask any questions. Or make any comments, and I'll start with Phil. Phil, did you have any questions or comments on this package tonight? And if you want to pass and have someone else start, that's fine, too.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
I don't know if Barb went through all the.
I did go through them all. One of the other questions that came up was just wanting to make sure that. The driveway apron width would accommodate two car driveways. I know you have not seen the. Kind of the draft town specifications or standards, but they would mirror the counties. Which would have a driveway apron have a maximum width of twenty feet. And basically Jason Azar indicated that a twenty-foot. Wide apron would eat, you know, basically is equivalent to a double driveway and should be sufficient to, for two large vehicles to park side by side. One of the issues that I had brought up at your last discussion was. Providing a, to see if there was interest in having a driveway apron alternative that would allow pavers to be used, since they are quite popular in town. The pavers would still need to be set in seven inches of concrete. We would ask if someone were to elect that option, that they would need to sign an acknowledgement that pavers can be dislodged by plowing activities. And that the town would not be responsible for any damage that results from that. One of the issues that I have to confess, I had not thought of until it was raised by the town attorney. Was basically where you might have sidewalks crossing driveway aprons. And Ron Bolt rightfully so raised an issue about possible ADA compliance. And whether or not we should allow pavers to be used. Jason Azar's opinion is that. You could have pavers that were. You know, one, that situation doesn't happen, we don't have sidewalks all over town, but that there are types of pavers that are ADA compliant and there are pavers that are not. So Jason Azar wanted to give, you know, felt that we could. Meet ADA standards with, while allowing some people to like the look of having all pavers. Jason's comment was that the specifications. If you don't, if you want to still allow that option. Basically should specify that any pavers would have to be ADA compliant in the interest of full disclosure, this would mean that. The types of pavers that could be, could be more limiting by resident, but we do have a requirement by federal law to obviously have. ADA compliance any place there is a sidewalk.
But if people have used papers that aren't ADA compliant, we're not going to make them rip them up, right?
There's been no discussion of that.
No discussion.
Of having them rip them up. You know, it is not uncommon across the country and there is someone, you know, that I was acquainted with in another jurisdiction in Montgomery County. You know, I think there is always a chance that someone could allege an ADA violation if there's a sidewalk and there are non-ADA compliant pavers, so. I'm saying now, I don't think there's any intention to have someone rip them up, but obviously if we were to receive a complaint would be filed.
Right.
And, you know, and I think rightfully so, there are, there is an activist that I'm acquainted with in Montgomery County who will. Go to governmental.
Barb, are you aware of any driveway aprons where we have sidewalks that are pavers?
Let me think if there's.
I can't think of any.
I can't think of any of the.
They put pavers down and they're doing a lot of work on their apron driveway.
Currently?
Yeah.
That may be unpermitted work, I'd have to check, maybe you can let me know what the address.
Which block of Oxford are you referring to?
It's before the, on the right.
Which direction are you walking?
If I'm going towards Waverly from on Oxford past.
Towards Canalworth?
Left, it's on the next block. And I think there was a, it's sold a few times, but there's a underground. Garage there, and there's, and they've done a lot of work on the exterior of the.
If you're walking east or walking west?
Walking towards the park.
Where's Wayman?
Towards Wayman, yeah.
Okay, towards Wayman. That's, that's.
East.
They've just done a lot of work there and there's a, there's a sidewalk there.
I think what matters though is the public walk, as long as that stays the concrete from S R T S, then it's fine for them to. Work on it on their own property. That sounds like everything from the public walk outward, it was not.
Right, I think the issue is if there is. Pavers crossing a sidewalk, basically, is where that becomes an issue. So I think we would just have to review. Applications as they come forward and we're having those reviewed by our engineering firm anyway.
It seems that this series of. Possible ordinances dovetail with the discussion about the maintenance of Garrett Park's. Sort of community integrity and zoning integrity, these are the multi-unit dwelling. Possibilities that the county is considering, right, or has adopted actually. And so I wonder if we might not consider these in tandem, that is, consider. This draft ordinance, especially as it relates to parking with the other. Sort of consideration about how do we keep Garrett Park's standards and zoning?
I'd have to, oh, I'd have to be in the ordinance, there's already a requirement in terms of. Off-street parking. Yeah, I believe, yeah, anytime there's an erection of a new dwelling unit within the town, a minimum of two off-street parking spaces for each such dwelling unit. With adequate provision for ingress and egress by standard-sized motor vehicles, and then it specifies how big parking spaces need to be.
So what you're saying, Barb, is under Garrett Park's current ordinances, a new construction. Of a home. Would require a driveway with an apron and off-street parking for at least two vehicles, is that correct?
That, yeah.
Per unit.
Look at page.
Well, right now it's only single families allowed.
Right, and I think what you all flagged last time is that.
That's true, yeah.
And that was left in there purposely, was never, never brought up to change that purposely, thinking for, as a placeholder for you to use that. Unless it's determined that's not an issue, that that would require the second or the third and the fourth spot on that.
Yeah, so just as a reminder, dwelling unit is defined as a building or portion thereof arranged for occupancy by not more than one family for living purposes and having cooking facilities. Including but not limited to single-family detached dwelling townhouses and apartment units. That's how your, your ordinance reads currently.
I mean, I guess my question is really about how we can make sure that any new version. Helps us maximize the community integrity in the zoning sphere of Garrett Park. And that I think that maybe we should await, I mean. I know Chris has been attending, you've been attending meetings as well.
I've attended a few. I would argue that it would be better for us to set our community integrity guidelines. And want to hold them after any change in the county guidelines comes in place, as opposed to trying to change them after the county guidelines change.
Yeah, I would agree.
Or how about both?
I mean, we'll probably have to adjust things because what our authority is, is in, will be brought into question with this, depending upon what the state does, right?
Yes.
But I think we have a better case for. Our standards if we make them while we have the current authority we have and our zoning is as it is. Then to change it only because of that change of the county, you know what I mean?
I haven't heard anything about the state wanting to pull municipality. Powers to zone on top of. The base zoning anyway, though, it's, isn't it really, the issue is whether or not they may, they may want to define. Whether we can handle like the single-family housing or.
Well, the way the law is currently constructed. We're only allowed to regulate single-family, and so if the zoning changes per the county's plan. Propose, continue, strategies that they're considering. We might not have legal authority to apply our limited authority to multifamily units.
But that would just be the distinction between single and multifamily, not, it wouldn't wipe out everything else, which might include like surface things like sidewalks and setbacks and other things.
I think it does bring in some legal ambiguity, and the county's proposal specifically states that. Off-street parking requirements would be reduced for multifamily homes. By half.
So you're right, maybe we should have some more stringent policies in place beforehand.
Yeah, I can't, I mean, I, I'm sure the proponents of this, the things that the county are considering, they're. They're anticipating municipalities trying to. Make chess moves to block it, so it's better to. Better go ahead and get, get things done.
I, Todd, I think your thought is a good one, I'm just suggesting, let's not wait, you know, let's, let's look at this in terms of what we want for our community in terms of. Driveways, curb aprons, you know, aprons. Seems like, maybe. Barb, had you had a chance to get through all of your points?
No, that's okay, though. That's okay, no, it should, this should be interactive in your meeting. So one of the other issues that you all had brought up at the last meeting was the appropriateness of the kind of ninety-foot. Figure in section seven twelve E, which is addressed the number of curb cuts to a property. There was a question about the number of Garrett Park lots that do not have ninety feet of street frontage. In discussing this matter with Jason Azar, he, he recognizes that there are some lots that have more than ninety feet. He cautioned against setting that figure too low, because as a reminder, this comes into play with, how many curb cuts can somebody have? Yeah, so since generally you only allow.
Driveway.
Yeah.
Right, so I have a question about that because. I will admit it freely, it's personal for me. Now, my driveway is permitted, so it would be grandfathered. But I feel like we have a very unique situation and the language as it is would not allow us today to do what we did when we put in our driveway, and I. I am concerned about that. Our house is a historical, so we have to do all sorts of things that other people don't have to do with their home. At the time that we put in the driveway, we had a huge pine tree out front that made it impossible for us to put in the kind of driveway that most people put in. And even if we were now with the tree gone to put in a driveway, it would still be very challenging because of the slope of, of. Difference between the height of the ground where my house sits versus down at the street is significant, and. Our neighbors have a hard time driving up their driveway without. Hitting, the slope is very high.
Correct.
For them to use, to use their driveway, it's not a very attractive driveway situation on our street. And so to me, if we had chosen to just put two side-by-side nooks. We would have had to dig further in than we did, and we'd have the sight, it would be less sightly from my perspective. Because people would be walking by and just seeing the rear end of our cars all the time. The circular driveway is a little more attractive option, and we had very little options with what we could do at the time. So in my opinion, we should allow, if we're providing for a variance procedure, it should allow for those kind of unique situations. And not be so tied to a number.
Right, I, I think what I would suggest, and I can certainly circle back around, this is more of an engineering issue than it is a legal issue. I would caution you against kind of lowering the width, but perhaps, you know.
Giving some, similar, I'm suggesting. Such as the corner, the variance we had tonight, we have an unusual lot, it has, you know, irregularities that make it difficult. To comply with the standard that we have, that's all I'm suggesting, that we give some more outs besides, only the ninety-footers get.
Permit is grandfathered.
Mine would be grandfathered, but there might be other houses that have similar situations to mine, and so I wouldn't want someone else to, to have to put in an ugly nook. Just because we made our standard too rigid.
Correct, I think the issue is just not lowering it and then having. Two curb cuts be a default acceptance, because I don't think that's something that we want everywhere, so I can work with Jason to see if he can suggest some language.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting some additional flexibility for unusual circumstances.
I think what would be important just to sort of run discuss tonight is. If that is kind of the ordinance that gets enacted, or that's the regulations. That as you all consider those issues, you're very clear on the record as to why those decisions are being made.
Yeah, and other council members may not necessarily agree with me, and I realize that, you know. Again, it won't affect me in the future, because we did get permitted and we do have two curb cuts, but there may be other houses that have similar strange situations that aren't just about the ninety feet.
Well, there's twenty-three other houses, and so you.
We, I, I will be honest, we are having, Jeanette is working on that, between just, you know, other things. That is not to say they, that all these are not, you know, are unpermitted, I don't want to suggest that at all, but she is not finding records that many of them are permitted, based on her research to date. She was going to check the Sonia when she's in at the archives to see if perhaps there's records in the archives that, you know, Jeanette doesn't have access to. But I think that is a possibility, and it's not surprising, I think, just given the age of the community. Probably differences over time in terms of how the town approached permitting matters. That some of these may not have permits the way we grant them today. Which doesn't mean that they were. You know, done outside of regulations or anything like that, I think we may just have some difficulty finding.
Well, thanks for the formal document. What would be the purpose of even trying to find out, because at this point, unless.
Because you.
If we're going to put permitting as a.
Right, you all asked, said they had to be permitted.
What is grandfathered is permitted or not.
Yeah, you all had said you wanted to grandfather any circular driveways that were permitted, therefore staff had to kind of try to see. Could we establish that those twenty-three were permitted?
But what are we going to do if we find out, for instance, that they're not?
You all can decide that you just want to grandfather whatever's there.
Charge them a permit.
No, I mean, we were, we were basically, we were trying to document what you all said you wanted to do at the last meeting. If you want to drop the word permitted, then Jeanette will have a lot more time on her plate than she's about to have right now.
Yeah, it may not be necessary, but I think that's one of the key things that would be good for like. Historic preservation and maybe even arboretum and Lain used to look at, like the. When I was on historic preservation years ago, we talked about all this issue of like, you know, how slightly or unsightly is it to have cars kind of parked in front of the house when. The town originally kind of pictured carriages, pulled it, the carriage houses behind the house and so on and so forth, so I think it's, it's worth like. Going, going back and redoing those discussions to kind of figure out like what's going to be in the best interest of the townscape in the future, and it might be that circular. Driveways are better than parking pads or cars parked, you know, kind of perpendicular right off the curb, so.
Yeah, so there's a whole series in the bullet points that follow, which all center around, how many curb cuts does someone get? Ron Bolt had provided some language, which may become moot based on the discussion you're having currently, but. You know, I know, I think the way this was originally drafted, which I don't think Jason or I picked up on. Was that if a corner lot could basically automatically have two driveways, one on each street, I would say that's generally not. Considered desirable, it's normally one per lot. So I think you all might want to just look at the bullet points that kind of focus around this ninety feet, or. What I'm hearing is there's not a desire to. Limit it to addresses that have frontage on strathmore or Knowles, that you'd want to be more flexible than that. And maybe as Stephen said, maybe this is something that the, the various committees can look at and try to come up with some type of. Standards. I mean, if you all have some specific ideas about those criteria, we can certainly take a shot at incorporating that and having you look at it before it goes to the committees. Or we can just kick it to the committees and ask them to come up with something.
Is the idea of this to have more language, like if I look at number eight, water drainage. And then there's no language at all. And there is traffic and parking. And there is traffic and parking congestion, and then there is nothing under nine. Um, is that is somebody gonna fill that in or is that just?
Those are.
To existing facts.
These are, this is new text.
Okay, so there's existing texts that we're just gonna see?
No, this this would be new text. This would be new text.
Yeah, no, what this is saying is that these are considerations that could come into um account during the process.
But what do you want to say about water drainage? Number seven, number eight.
Typically, you'd say you gotta keep your own except for the the part that slopes into the street.
Correct.
Oh, I see.
Correct.
Yeah, these are just things.
We don't say, we don't say what.
Well, I I can tell you, we had a um a driveway that was constructed on Kennelworth near Argyle.
Thank you.
Um, I, you know, we we send driveway permit applications to Clark Azar to look at because they're ultimately an engineering thing. One of the things he noticed with what that applicant submitted is that they needed to modify the flares on their driveway apron that was proposed for construction. Um, there was something specific that they had to do with construction to make sure that they weren't channeling water onto a neighbor's property. So those are all things that are looked at during the review process.
Okay.
Um, so they're not going to be super well-defined, but it's basically giving somebody an idea of what are the things that we look at when we're reviewing a driveway permit application. I know there was some discussion at your last meeting about um kind of the general catch-all in number eleven.
Yeah.
Um, basically, it's intended to be a general catch-all because I think just given the variety of. Of lot configurations in Garrett Park, um it was intended by the town attorney to basically. Say that there may be things that are not considered in items one through ten that may actually be reviewed. Because there's no way we can write an ordinance or we can write specifications that are going to deal with each and every situation that comes up.
This is like a catch-all?
Yes, it's intended to be that. Um.
I think it's too vague. I will still say that because it's just. You know, how do you prepare for that when you do an application that you?
Well, I think the specifications will also provide some more specificity, Phil, and obviously y'all haven't seen those yet because we're still trying to just figure out where this is going. I don't think there's any point in really talking about the the curb cuts because I think that's an issue that you all um. Basically, want more flexibility built in, but you're not sure exactly how to define that, which is. If if they're going to, yeah, if these are going to come back to you, there probably needs to be a little bit more meat on the bone because you're going to have to, like the variance, decide why are you allowing it in this specific case. Um. I guess one question that has come up is the second to the last bullet where you all had talked about. You wanted to include grandfathering language um. For existing in the word you all used was permitted circular driveways. Do you want us to take permitted out?
Yeah, I personally suggest we take permitted out because. I mean, they're they're there, you know, um unless somebody.
They're not permitted, we can get a permit from them, you know?
Would a new one have to come with since this has two openings potentially, would a new permit for replacement with that come back for a? Like a variance-type decision anyway?
It it depends how you, what the criteria is for allowing someone to have two curb cuts. Um. I don't know that we would permit retroactively. I mean, they're they're kind of there if we were. To require them because we can't find documentation that they were permitted. The mere process of permitting them would trigger that the driveway aprons both both driveway aprons now have to be seven inches of concrete because that is that will be the new driveway apron standard.
It's tricky though, because I think the vast majority of them, unless there's a bunch that I'm forgetting, that the vast majority of them are like cut through asphalt curbs and are just like um like stone and. Whatnot on the other side. It's not like um, I don't think there are very many of them that that weren't part of uh, you know, there probably are some that were part of SRTS or on Strathmore where they already had sidewalk. Concrete then that have those concrete aprons, but I think a lot of them are just, they're just kind of ad hoc.
And remember, on Strathmore, technically, it's a state requirement because it's their.
But they also got assistance through the project to get their.
But I can tell you that my neighbor has been, their house is probably built in sixty-four, like mine is. They do have concrete aprons on their circular driveway and they're definitely less than ninety foot across.
Yeah.
And those are the ones I'm thinking about.
I and I agree with with Phil. I don't I don't think we should limit it to permitted because many people may, even if it was an unpermitted driveway. The house may have turned over in the meantime, so you know, we'd be holding the current owner to account for something that. They had no idea when they bought the house that it was a permitted driveway.
I mean, the permit came from you all at the last discussion.
Right.
Um, so yeah, I want to change it. It perfectly fine. It will save staff a lot of work from going back and searching. Um.
Well, yes and no, Barb. I do think actually documenting where those are now is important so that we have a clean slate moving forward.
We have all the addresses. Those are, I think the only question that um. George assigned Oliver to go out and basically they gave me a list of all the addresses in town that have a circular driveway. The only step that Jeanette was then starting to work on was this question of permitted. Um, so I will tell her she can stand down tomorrow.
That would be my suggestion, yep.
Um, and I think the only other thing that you all had discussed last time. Um, that you wanted to be clear that in the case of a circular driveway, both aprons would need to be concrete with a depth of seven inches when repairs replacements are being made. Um, this would not be in the ordinance. This would be in the eventual specifications that you all would adopt by resolution. Um. So these are just the fault. I mean, if there's anything else, but the items that are underlined were the items that you all talked about and wanted staff to follow up on.
I um I will say, do like the inclusion of uh where they said vehicular access to uh Strathmore or Knowles. I mean, I think that's.
That could be one of the potential.
That would be.
Consideration.
Yeah, I think that would, that's a great idea and I I'm glad somebody came up with that one.
Yeah, I think that mirrored um some language from one of Ron Bolt's other clients. I think it might have been Martin's additions and he just substituted. Um, Strathmore Knowles for the street that is in Martin's additions.
Gotcha. Probably put real rude.
That that's what it was, yeah. Um, so that's really all I had tonight. Um. You know, is, are there any um?
Any other, yeah, changes for Barb to consider?
Yeah, I mean, I what we can either do is send the the draft ordinance as it exists. Today, I can send that to the various committee chairs or there are changes. Um, would you like us to try to come back with? Something addressing the um. The circular driveway, two curb cut issues as a a shot at what might be. Conditions that might warrant that. Is that something you'd like us to?
Yeah, I would personally.
Like to see that before the committee, before it gets circulated to the committees? Could it be concurrent?
It could be concurrent, yeah, definitely. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
So you're okay with this going out to the committee as it stands?
As it stands, yeah.
Yeah, as long as the con, well, as it stands or with this concept that we just with more flexibility incorporated?
Um.
For the circular driveway.
For the circular, right.
Yeah, for the dual curb curb cut.
Yeah, I mean, I do have some language that um. What I might suggest is I think Ron Bolt. Had given me some grandfathering language for existing circular driveways. Um, that would need to be modified because we did include permitting in that. Um. Are you all comfortable? One thing that I I think I flagged this for you, but we, I don't think we've resolved it is if you look at um. It's page three of the ordinance, um it's section seven twelve and it's E. It it begins with the cross-out part that says a clerk treasurer, blah, blah, blah. Where it says there shall be no more than one curb cut entrance for a property. Jason Azar was suggesting that per street be struck and then it, because then it would go on to say approval of a second entrance, however, may be considered by the town council. So essentially what it is saying. Is that the default is a one curb entrance per property. In other words, we would strike per street.
Yeah, I I think that makes sense.
And then um the rest of it would read as you see it today.
Well, except for the whole ninety-foot thing, that's.
Um, yeah, we.
Yeah, and the ninety foot would be.
We have to come up with something for that one.
Yeah, I don't, we haven't had this for a while, so I don't think there's any compelling urgency. And I'd like to get it as close to what you all are happy with before I send it to the committees, just to avoid needless confusion. Um, if you all are okay with this, what I'd like to do is work with Jason Azar, at least take a shot at drafting some things in terms of conditions that might. Um, at least provide a basis for the town council to review a request for a second entrance, bring that back in November. Um, you try to. I'd like to work with Jason about that, but just bring something back. That seems to be the major issue right now that you all still have concerns about. And we could just talk about this briefly again in November and hopefully get it as close as we can to what might be an ordinance um. For possible introduction, then I'd send it out to the committees if that's okay.
I wonder if it's worthwhile also, since the um it was surveyed, how many circular driveways there are, if it's worthwhile like surveying how many corner lots have two. Two or more entrances. I know the one next to me has three and one they don't use anymore, so I wonder if.
Yeah.
Second question is, should we?
I think.
Should we have a provision to seal those up if they're not being used in the future, like the next street paving?
Yeah, I think um I I think the maintenance staff may have already done that. It wasn't, I think while they were out there, they went ahead and did that. I think the question you're raising, Stephen, actually um. The person kind of dropped the application, but I think the question becomes if someone wants to construct a driveway, a driveway in a new location. I I would say, and I'm not the one who ultimately makes this decision, um either as Jason Azar, but we feel like the. The existing driveway should probably be removed. Um, you're saying sealed off, but. You know, part of that is an aesthetics issue too, so you don't see, you know, two asphalt driveways running across a property. Um.
Somebody wants to build a new driveway where there's an existing driveway?
Right, so I mean, I did have a request earlier this year, um and and the reasons were were, you know, were valid in the sense of the particular family circumstances. But what they wanted to do is they turned in a driveway application to construct a new driveway. There were some other issues in terms of the proximity to a neighbor's property. But when I went back and said, well, why aren't you removing the existing driveway? Because they were just going to leave it there. Um, and part of that was just financial reasons. Um, but I think that's an issue that you all need to kind of think about if, you know, what happens to, you said, Stephen, someone kind of. Does it need to be blocked off? Does it need to be removed? And this is more a question about what happens going forward.
Mm-hmm.
You know, um, because these issues are going to come up. Like, like I said, one's already come up during my tenure.
Yeah, if we're trying to do all the work to limit it to one in almost all cases, then.
Right.
We have some oddballs that have two or three. Some of them make sense, a lot of them don't.
Yeah, but I can bring that information back because um Oliver, um, you know, I don't think everyone's had a chance to meet Oliver, our newest member of our maintenance team, but I think he went out and did count those. So I think I have that information on the same count that he had done the circular driveways on.
Okay, good.
But I don't know their status of whether the apron got removed or they're just literally just still existing.
Okay, okay. All right, well, thank you, Barb, for all of the behind-the-scenes work on this to get this um developed. All right, it is nine thirty-five and we are undertaking our nine twenty item on the agenda. Uh, discussion of approach to repairing masonry wall near the pool property, and I'm just going to remind everybody what we agreed at the beginning of the meeting. We are not going to have a full discussion of the technical merit of this at today's meeting. We're just going to briefly review the history of this, where it stands, uh so that we can have a more full discussion in November. I note that the the pool board president has joined us, but she is um. Undertaking some some, uh, if I may say this, Donna, she's she's not in the best situation to engage with us fully tonight for personal reasons and so.
I think she's on.
She is on.
She is on.
She is not in the best of situations to be able to engage with us fully. And again, the pool board officially asked us not to consider this item fully because they didn't get an adequate notice. Of the materials um to be able to give an official comment forward. So I want to be.
Pulling off too, yeah.
But still have enough of a discussion tonight so that we can be prepared for the November discussion. And this is not for action other than next step, which would be whatever we do for the November discussion.
Um, so as Stephen mentioned in some comments when you all were considering um approval of the agenda. This item was discussed on several occasions um back in twenty twenty-three. Um, I don't remember the exact timeframe, but uh. Generally, it was like the first half of calendar year twenty twenty-three and there has only been minimal discussion of the matter since then. Back in twenty twenty-three, there were staff presented um four options, um. Possible options to repair the the masonry wall near the pool property. Um. There were, obviously, there's different people sitting here, you know, among the elected body. Um, there's been two, two changes since then. And there was divergent opinions in terms of um kind of what repair option. Should take place. There was, you know, kind of, do you remove the wall? Um, there were conflicting opinions about its historic value. We went everywhere from sort of a timber wall to doing something in concrete block. Um. Then there was subsequent discussion about hiring a historic, an architectural firm with a historic bent to kind of look at it and talk about the repair methodology. Some of the delays since that time candidly is because of other um items on my uh plate. The very brief discussion that we had back in February um was tied to the budget work session you had at the end of February of this year. I had given you all sort of draft project descriptions for the proposed FY twenty twenty-five capital improvement program. Um, and basically included in your agenda packet was sort of the. Kind of narrative description of sort of what staff was proposing at that time, and it was an attempt to try to. Respect those who felt that the wall was historic and it should not be removed and those who didn't want to invest a lot of money in the repair. Um. So the idea for those of you who are are members of the pool, it would be to essentially mirror the seated bench wall that is on the right. Avoid the light pole because that would be incredibly expensive to have to relocate that. Um, so the the plan in a nutshell would be to sort of mirror that that bench seating and the retaining wall on the to the right. We would preserve the existing light pole. The intention was to try to leave the end of the brick wall exposed so that the history of the cistern would not be completely obscured. A copy of the letter from the Pool Board Association President, for those of you who may not have seen, checked your email. Um, over the weekend or today is is left at your places at the um table, so you can see that there. Um, so while we kind of talked about this in a very cursory fashion as part of the FY twenty twenty-five budget process. Um, and the funding that was included was tied to that approach. I I, you know, I did not feel that there was any explicit direction for staff to move forward with this recommended repair approach, so we're sort of in a little bit of a no man's land now. Um, the last direction was to hire a historic architect. Um, so just given kind of the change of composition. Wanted to see if that's still the direction you all wanted to go and you don't have to decide that tonight, obviously. You know, the wall, there's been a few bricks that had popped off. I did have, um, because of concerns from the Pool Board Association President. Um, in the past, it concerns that we were not moving fast enough to um repair the wall. I did have Jason Azar um. Meet me on site, have him review the wall again, and as I shared with Donna, um, the wall is certainly not in any imminent, you know. Risk of failure or anything else. We've had a few bricks pop off of it, basically. So you you certainly don't have to do anything immediately, you know, you can take whatever time.
Do some repair that's done before the pool opens in the summer, is that right?
Um, that's up to you all. Um, like you say, it could probably stay in its current condition for another couple of years if that's what you, you know, barring anything changing in its status. Um, you are correctly, so that at least my impression had been that. The pool board was eager for us to move forward with the repair.
Right.
Um, in talking to Donna Thursday night after her board meeting, apparently Jason Azar's comments that the wall was not in danger of, you know, failing. There was not a, you know, a safety issue per se. You could always just block off things where the bricks are falling. We can move this forward at whatever timeframe you all would like. As I mentioned earlier, um, and I don't think this is problematic, given sort of what's happened with the road and sidewalk improvements project and the change order. Um, there is ARPA funding dedicated to this that we just need to reallocate to another project, and my assumption at this point is we would do that. To cover the change order one that you all approved earlier tonight.
Barb, something you said, I wanted to make sure I understood correctly. You indicated that, and I think it was at the May twenty twenty-three meeting perhaps, um, that the council agreed to. Or directed that we bring in a historic architect to look at this. So did we do that?
We have not. I've had some difficulty. Jason Azar doesn't know of anyone. Um, I'm not sure what direction to go into in terms of finding someone. Stephen might be able to help with that because.
Yeah, I had one. Yeah, I had one suggestion like.
Was that Bell Architects?
Yeah.
It might have been.
So we did that kind of work. When I worked there, we did that kind of work for Montgomery County Parks and MPG Parks, so.
Yeah, I think certainly the the knowing that there are, you know, people here today who weren't here before. It probably just warrants, you know, Todd's new, Chris's new. It it probably just warrants some conversation in terms of what you want to do. At at this juncture, whatever direction you go, we would just need to move funding from the contingency account to cover that whenever. That direction is either reconfirmed or you have new direction. Okay.
We think that the the pool board is going to have a full presentation of what they want. The letter has some.
Has some direction in it.
Yeah, but it's not.
Right, they they want more time to give it their their input on this is what they're asking for.
And come back to us with what they want.
Um.
Or what they would recommend.
I think they just want more time. I I'd like to point out, I'd like to point out that they're not the only stakeholder here, right? There's also the Historic Preservation Committee and. And the pool board, right? And and perhaps even the parks committee, because one of the things that the pool board was bringing into play is that. We have had on our capital improvement plan improvements to the Cambria area as a whole, which includes the the whole cistern. Also goes under the dog park. And so that was one of the issues that Donna raised in her in the pool board letter to us. Whether we want to consider this as part of that whole. I'm not suggesting we do that, but that's just something that was raised in that letter. So that would bring in the folks committee into.
Yeah, and I think, you know, if I can make two more comments, I think obviously. You know, as you were all were resolving the FY twenty twenty-five budget, the funding, the initial sixty thousand dollars in funding. To kind of do, and Stephen, you may have to help me with the exact term. I don't know if it was schematic design or something to that level. Fifty percent of that funding was removed. So at this point, what had been discussed as far as a first flush look at. Cambria and Stephen can certainly describe it better than I can, that funding, the funding needed for that does not exist currently. So that would be something.
Right, and and the reason for that cut was those of us who pushed for it was so that the town could get a little further along. Before we put out an RFP to direct someone to help us, that we had a little bit more of an idea of what we wanted their scope of work to be.
In the dog park.
In the whole Cambria area.
And.
From the dog park all the way to the woodchip pile.
There is no dog park, actually.
Well, the the old tennis courts that are used as a dog park.
It's pretty terrible. So.
So.
I'm totally confused. So what has to, what is, so today is.
Today, we're just reviewing the history.
What do we need to do or to plan or to get more information or more designs or more consultants? Is there anything we need to do to help be in a position to make a decision in November?
What I would recommend is, if I may. We've already shared this with the pool board. I suggest we also share it with the Historic Preservation Committee. I don't think we need to bring it.
I would agree.
The historic pres is already opined on it.
On, not on this particular design though. They were. They opined on the concept in general.
You've got it in front of you, actually. Um, so.
So I think if we want to discuss this design or. Even this concept at the next meeting. I I think we should not just be asking the pool board to give input. I think we should be asking the historic preservation. Yes, the Historic Preservation Committee gave a statement on the general. Situation, but before this particular conceptual idea was formulated as a solution.
Yeah, I think what Phil is, I think what Phil is recalling is I think the past discussion about hiring a historic architect. Came from HPC, I believe, is what Phil is referring to. Yeah, so like I say. This was clearly an attempt to try to straddle different points of view that were out there. I'm not saying it hit the mark or not. So generally, what you're suggesting is that essentially. A communication be with Brian Mizuguchi as the Chair of Historic Preservation, and there was another.
The pool board.
And the pool board has it.
Yeah, give them both an opportunity to review not just the sketch, but a narrative description of what the concept is is attempting to do. Yeah, which should be in your memo. I think it is covered. So that would be my suggestion, that we. Give those two groups an opportunity to review the materials, and then in November, we can hear their input. And determine next steps based on what we hear.
Okay.
That would be my proposal.
Well, I've got a couple, I mean, like, things. The first one is. I would like to get Jason to. Explain why or why not we should even consider tying this in with the quote unquote dog park, ex tennis court, whatever you want to call it, because. To me, there is no tie-in whatsoever.
I I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with.
Yeah, I don't think Jason would agree at all.
I don't, I don't think there's any connection, in my opinion.
I mean, to me, there's, and so that was one of the things that Donna had brought up. And I think that.
So an engineering opinion as to whether the two projects can be done separately.
Separately.
Yeah, I guarantee you they can. I mean, they have nothing, unless you're going to recreate it as a tank to hold water, they're really not tied together.
I I would agree with the two of you, but I can certainly ask Jason to put that in writing, but that is my understanding as well.
And then I think that we're, where some confusion may have come up was that when we first started discussing this umpteen years ago. We had talked about a quote unquote add-on to this job was going to be that while they had an excavator present on the property, they were going to excavate a bit of that. That old cistern area in what we call colloquially the dog park, and that was just to find out what was down there.
It was to find the degrees of settlement and that's been done. That was done some time ago.
And that, okay. And that was considered an add-on. It wasn't really. To do specifically with tying the two projects together. It was just, hey, somebody's got this. We can find it. What's there's input for future use of.
Yeah.
That area.
And I'll, if I may, just elaborate. So when Clark, we get work orders from Clark Azar is kind of how things get. Executed and and ultimately built. So it's tied to a specific budgetary account. This specific work order. As as Phil was alluding to, was basically to do a survey, which was completed last year, I believe. We had, we had some discussion of it at a meeting, I recall. There was a second component of that. Joanna was mayor at the time. And it it specifically states that unless specific direction is given, they were not to. Pass go on the second component, which had to do with the possibility of. Doing some kind of concept plans for the area that is now sort of the tennis courts and the dog park. Clark Azar has never done anything on that because they were never directed by the town to do that.
Right.
And then there subsequently became some broader discussions. Obviously about looking more broad-based in terms of Cambria and and the town owned land.
But I think if it's. Going to include that area, not just the repair of the wall and the area in the pool, then I think parks and open space should also have a role in that.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of the, that's obviously a decision for you all. I think.
That's not currently contemplated.
Right, but I'm just saying when it is.
Yeah, and I, and I.
We get to the point where we're ready to do something with that space, I think parks and open space should all be involved.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think when you look at the area that obviously was the old tennis courts. And I think, Lisa, you might have been present when Jason Azar was, I was meeting with him, and I think you were there as well, and possibly Jack Mandell at the time.
When we looked at the wall.
Yeah, in terms of where the old tennis courts are, in terms of what kind of. Structural reinforcement would be needed ultimately as a function of what do you plan to put there?
Right.
So if, I'm just not suggesting this at all, but if there was a structure, a gazebo or something to that effect. It obviously requires a different level of reinforcement than if it's just sort of a grassy area.
Right.
So it's sort of a chicken and the egg kind of thing, but I will confirm with Jason, but I agree with Stephen and Phil. I don't believe there's any nexus whatsoever between that area and and the wall repair.
From a structural integrity standpoint, yes.
But my understanding is the whole, what used to be a water.
Cistern?
Cistern tank, yeah.
Is all degrading. So that the land where that cistern was is all.
Yeah, that's why it keeps settling in the.
So, yeah, so that, it seems to me, we need to address it in some way, shape or form at some point. When we decide what we're going to put there.
That is fair, but the question at hand is really, can we move forward once we're ready with the design, with the pool work and have it be separate from a structural integrity standpoint? From the other.
Correct.
And I think that's.
Yeah.
It sounds like it was tested and found that that settling had. Finished or, because I haven't seen any lumpy spots over there, so I'm guessing it's been filled over time and whatever wood was in there is fully rotted by now.
Yeah, what I'll do is, you know, Jason is very responsive, I think, just so you all have time to mull this over. I will ask him to provide me something in writing, kind of responding to this question. Well, in advance of the November meeting. That way, if there's any follow-up questions, you know, I have time to go back and forth with Jason.
And then is it possible to ask him to do a 3D rendering or something similar, a. A viewpoint from standing on the pool deck at what this. New edge of the wall would look like. It's kind of hard, I think, for some people to understand what it might be. And so for the portion that's sticking out, just to have some type of little rendering, we could look at and go, yeah, okay, we know how much it's going to look.
Yeah, I I can ask him that. I was the one who asked him to do the drawing because I figured for some people, that is a visual.
Yeah.
Um, when Jason gave me this, he did say, look, I'm going to be the first to admit I'm an engineer, not an architect, so. So I think he he may feel that his abilities to provide that bill are limited, but I will certainly ask.
I'm, well, I'm just thinking, I mean, if it's, it's not, doesn't have to be quote unquote rendering. I mean, if they've got the thing set up in some type of CAD which allows for 3D, they should be able to just.
I'll talk to him about that. I mean, there is clearly some, you know, a structural engineer would need to be brought in. I was trying to get. Some kind of visual that I thought might be helpful to move this along without going too far into a lot of expense.
Yeah, that's all I'm thinking of. Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking of. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so to quickly summarize, Barb's going to check in on the structural integrity issue for the two separate sides of the fence with the engineers. She's going to share the package with both the Historic Preservation Committee and the pool board already has it, but she'll give an update to the pool board. And we'll take this up on the agenda for the November meeting for consideration.
And the 3D or some type of.
Oh, right, and fourth, we'll attempt to get, Barb will attempt to get a 3D visual.
And one other point I'd like to bring the attention of anybody that's going to look at this now or in the future is. Clark Azar showing a forty-two inch guardrail with pickets on it on the top of this. That's not by accident. I'm sure that they're looking at the dimensions of that proposed drop from where the. Where the sod would be down to where there would be a wood bench and then down to the deck that you would need that to be co-compliant. Existing wall on the other side is not co-compliant, and I'm not sure. Why that was designed that way, but I've pointed it out to the pool board before. That's a pretty risky thing to have it like that.
It is. Jason made two points. I mean, one, you're correct, it's a code compliance issue. So, you know, if if we're going to be doing any construction, we need to follow the code. I don't know the history of the other side, which the town was not involved in. It will know it's it's a rope. A rope is not basically something that will keep someone from falling. So Jason had. On, if you're at the pool, if you're looking to, oh, if you're going up the right side. There is a rope. That is not, that's not code compliant. It's not inadequate. So I don't know the history. It should, it needs to be a rail. So Jason. What is shown on the detail, you know, was the project we would be doing. Yeah, I mean, if you want to add something on the other side, obviously, you know, that's kind of a discussion with the pool board. Is that our expense or their expense? I don't have an opinion on that. And the railing, he had a very kind of basic, you know, kind of. Railing, if you will. He said that could certainly be made fancier if anybody wanted. He just needed to show something needed to go there.
Barb, one last question. I did notice that maybe Donna had made some comments. Is there anything in the comment chat that we should? Give Donna an opportunity to speak up or reference her comments?
She said, it's it's a little bit hard when you're having discussions because you don't know what they're responding to, because I wasn't looking. At one point, there was one comment that that is accurate regarding preference to have completed by May. Happy to meet with you and Brian and Barb. Brian is a very active pool member. I mean, Brian, Brian Mizuguchi.
Mizuguchi, historic preservation.
You know, if if the desire is to try to get it done by May of next year. We just, you you are going to need to settle on a repair approach fairly quickly. Because there's, you know, not only is there they're opening in May, but there's obviously. Pre-opening activities that happen and we don't want to, you know, in any way interrupt with that, so.
Contracting this work probably takes more than actually doing the work to.
Probably would, you're hundred percent correct, Stephen, because when Jason and I were just sort of talking about this idea. It kind of, it it's. Almost more of a landscaping companies kind of, it's more the type of contractor than like a DNF construction. So the type of contractor that we hire is very much driven by the type of repair approach. You know, I know Jason that they would probably, you know, need to do some outreach to find someone who's more of a landscaping company, because this is a little bit outside the wheelhouse of the contractors we typically hire.
About the people doing the end zone work.
Yeah, they're, they don't, they don't actually do construction.
Yeah, they're designed. They're designed.
Yeah, they're a design firm.
But.
Anything for.
Well, no, I was just going to say, and we. Agreed that we're looking for a a architectural, a.
Why don't we table that until November?
Hold it, yeah.
That's fine. I just wanted to, I just wanted to get clarity on.
I'm glad you re-raised it, that's fine.
Okay, I think that's fine.
But it seems like maybe, let's hear what the Historic Preservation Committee says about this.
Okay.
In November. Is that fair?
Yeah, I think it'd be good to table it, and then, because the reason I suggested that before is like, on something like this, it might be like a really straw, a really small, like a one or two pager, just kind of saying, hey, this. This brick may look like it's old, but it was actually put in the fifties, or maybe it is old, or, you know, maybe, you know. What things are really original that if it's kept, what. What should really be kept for historic reasons versus don't, don't waste your money on keeping something that's not historic. That that sort of thing could be summarized on a one or two page analysis.
And also if it's in the condition where it's still, you know, intact, hasn't degraded.
Would we want that then for the input to the Historic Preservation Committee?
Well, do we have time? We won't be able to get, accomplish that before November, I'm certain.
We don't have a firm to do it yet, right?
It can be pretty quickly.
I'm sorry?
The Historic Preservation Committee can meet fairly quickly.
So is your question is, should, since Stephen, you know, had provided the name of a firm, is your. Is your thought to try to have someone come out and just kind of, I mean, Stephen, I would probably want you there to be honest if we have someone come out just because of your knowledge base, but. Are you thinking, though, it would still be a good idea to have, try to find a historic architect to do kind of a first?
It sounds that way. And I mean, is is, I'm certain to think about it. It does kind of sound because if they come out and basically say. You know, it's going to cost you a million bucks, you're going to have to rebuild the whole thing, blah, 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 or they're going to say, well, it looks like it's in good shape, or. We see your idea might work. I mean, I'll defer to Stephen as far as. That goes. I'm just thinking might be good input for.
Is this something that might be worth contacting like a local university for, like University of Maryland, to see if any professors or grad school teams would want to. Look at it? I don't know.
But I, I would. I would wonder if they'd want to take on something where there might be some professional liability about a judgment, or like a lot of times they do documentation like HABSS. Historic American Building Survey did drawings of houses in town here, but there's no liability attached to that. You're just drawing the house. So I don't know. I'm not sure if they would. Might be worth asking.
How about there, Stephen, and at what cost and what timeframe to look at what's there? Dig it up and look at it and say what the historic significance of it is.
I mean, I, I used to work with somebody who would just do that in a day, like they would just go out for a day, go look around for a couple of hours. Ideally, you get, and I did this even with a building in Kensington, you you get somebody to dig it out so you can kind of see it first and then.
Call that person, can Barb call that person and ask them to do that for a couple of thousand dollars, and we will know something?
Yeah, I think it would just be that. It would be a couple of thousand dollars at most. And if it's more than that, then maybe just say. We'll hold it until we know, know more about what the town's determination is, because I think the big thing is if you. If the consensus becomes like, hey, just go ahead and plow it over, then like, why study it? But if there's enough. Grounds wealth for the idea of kind of keeping it as a artifact and exposing a little bit of it, then that's the other way.
What it is and what the value of it is would be a good first step, it seems to me, before we make that decision.
So Barb, could you add that to your to-do list to make an attempt? So Barb, could you add that to your to do list to make an attempt? I'm not gonna, I, I, I think that's a lot to ask before November, but if you could make an attempt to reach out to the company that Stephen identified.
Yeah, at one point, um. Clarkays are had, um, prepared a tentative scope of work. Stephen, you may recall that. Cause I just brought that up. So that goes back to June of last year, of twenty twenty three. Um, so I guess some of this, what you're saying may be more scaled back than this. So what Jason had drafted back then as a possible scope. Was to review the existing condition of forty plus, um, or minus linear feet of existing brick wall, which is part of an old cistern. Induct field of exploration such as test pits, if necessary, to determine extent of underlying wall foundation issues. Coordinate with the town civil structural engineer on remedies to correct, preserve, reconstruct the wall. Provide options for review, attend a meeting with town officials and developing plans. What I'm hearing is that. I think that's much more significant than I think what you all are talking about tonight. Are you really talking about just wanting someone to give you an opinion as to?
The historic significance of the wall.
That's what I'm hearing. So this is.
Looking for the significance. We got the committee gave us, us a read on the significance. I thought we were looking more at. The, um, ability to preserve the small.
That's, that's what I was thinking. The ability to preserve or what could be preserved, what should be preserved.
Like the brick integrity and ability. Preserve it if it's not significant? The historic preservation committee, I'll be happy to refer it to you. I meant to do it before today's meeting. Their opinion was that it is.
It is significant.
It's the only remaining, um, physical, um, connection to the, to the, to the railroad.
Yeah.
That the town was founded based on the railroad.
Now, Chris Keller, I know is also pretty strongly in favor of keeping it as an artifact. Like he was on the historic preservation committee, I think, when it. Last was.
That's true.
Talked about.
Yeah, I'll forward their, their opinion back to everybody. Do you think we need this firm Steve to go out there and tell us?
I think it couldn't hurt. I forgot actually. I was just forgetting now. I actually did this myself, but like buildings at Fort McNair, like the old, like brick wells that were underneath. Where the Lincoln conspirators were hung. Um, but yeah, I think it could be something they could do like pretty quickly. I could even email and copy.
That couldn't be part of it. I was suggesting that's not really the main reason we go to them because the historic preservation committee already did some research and. Gave us a statement to say they believe it's, it's of significance. But, um. If we're going to preserve it, that this historical architect could give us a better idea of what there could be preserved or.
Yeah. And what you could make of it. Yeah.
Right. Right.
Stephen.
I think that would be worthwhile.
Stephen, let me ask you a question. Obviously you, you seem to be familiar with some of the folks in Bell Architects and this is sort of in your wheelhouse. Not trying to delegate upwards, but are you comfortable reaching out to them or could you suggest? I'm just trying to see how we can make this go smoothly as possible.
Maybe I could just send them an email, like the appropriate contacts. I could send them an email, copy you and then just say, hey, could you? Get Barb like a really quick proposal on just kind of, um, kind of a, a one pager, um, recommendation on the, you know, the preservation potential.
Yeah. If you could make that connection, Stephen, I remember looking at the firm and they certainly have a number of people on staff who are, are very knowledgeable. But this is also much more in their wheelhouse and your wheelhouse than mine. So if there's any assistance you could give me, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. Um, for keeping that more or less limited. All right. We have town updates on speed dating. Um, I'm up first with Arboretum and just very quickly, the committee is going to, um, begin the process this fall of a five year update of the. Comprehensive Arboretum plan. It's hard to believe, but it was first, um, completed in November of twenty nineteen. And it does call for a five year update. So they are beginning that process. They're planning to break it out into small chunks and not just do it all at once. So, um, they're going to take up individual pieces and bring those advertised, um, for people if they want to come and give input. So that'll be going on over the next year. There will be a tree walk that we do this twice a year and the, it, this year it will be, this fall, it will be November tenth. So we hope there'll still be some color on the trees. That's Sunday, November tenth at one P M. Uh, the committee is meeting this Wednesday at, here at town hall at seven P M on October sixteenth. Archives committee, Mr. Schultz.
Okay. So, uh, Sonia is reporting that she is, uh, working through the process of reconciling town council meetings to, uh. Make sure that we've got records that, um, are properly stamped. Scott with a notary stamp, but I don't know.
It's not really notary.
I didn't think it was notary.
It's me as a seal.
It's a, that's what I thought was the officials, that they are stamped with the official town seal. Um, a quick curiosity on that one. Some of that stuff is like, I mean, I've looked at some of the old records, um, through. Like you, you can get them on microfiche through, uh, the state and stuff. Some of that stuff, of course, has never been, it looks like it was ever stamped. I mean.
It wasn't in the past and part of what is prompting Sonia's current work is, um, when we were, um, kind of packing up for the. Town office renovation, um, some of the very old minutes like that are in the really fancy, you know, the extra tall. Were actually not in the archives. They had been in my office for years apparently. Um, so as we were sort of unpacking boxes. I, I think Jeanette made the wise call that we would keep the most recent several years, but especially the, the very old records that were in the really fancy. Um, binding should be down in the archive. So I think Sonia met with Claire fairly recently, just to sort of. Kind of try to integrate those things and make sure there was not a lot of duplication. But you're correct. If you look at some of the very old minutes, they're, they were not sealed.
Right. Okay. Um, probably weren't on acid free paper either, but.
No.
Nevertheless.
And, uh, also she's reprocessed the neighborhood watch collection along with creating a finding aid for the collection and. Is in her filing, uh, legacy obituaries in the memorial services obituary collection. So those who knew people who died, you can go look it up.
Very interesting.
Um, and, um, she's also done a beautiful article on contribution of archivists to the committee or to, I'm sorry, the community. And, um, we've got a new display at the post office with the USDA's influence on, uh. Which I know has been there for a little while, but, uh, it's kind of cool. USDA's influence on Garrett Park and its residents. And I will have a claim to fame on that one because the person who was in charge of the USDA used to live in my house. It was also Jimmy Carter's, uh, sister.
I think we had some of the greenhouses behind ours.
Yes.
Jimmy Carter's sister?
Yeah, I believe that's, yeah. Yeah. Because the back of my refrigerator says Carter on it. And when we talked to some people about, yep, that's, that's who it was.
Very interesting.
Anyhow, um, and they got rid of an old, looks like got rid of an old printer.
All right.
So.
Thank you, Phil. Historic preservation committee, Councilmember Eisenstadt.
Yes. So the, the slated for, um. Demolition house at one oh nine one five Claremont had a salvage last weekend that went very well. About eight people attended and turned items for their own Chevy houses, I believe. And, um, so that, that worked out and they want to figure out how to save the Chevy houses, but. I guess they don't have a conclusion. No. So anyway, um, it's an ongoing effort.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Stephen, we all have the paper you provided, um, but. We didn't have a lot of time to review, so I'd like to recommend we keep this relative short. If you could give us a summary of your proposal.
I plan to anyway. And, and my reason for this is, um, it was kind of promised at the last meeting, you know, I kind of get this. And I wanted to get this out for everybody's consideration before we bring up the, um, town hall topic more directly and more fulsomely in, uh. November. Um, so we will keep it super short. Um, but I think my biggest thing was that, um, as we all know, like we're. We have a pretty big budget gap on this. Like we have about two million around, um, held for it. And even with it cut down to like the option for size, it was pushed to be. Or pushing to be over three million dollars all in. So that's like a, a million, maybe more in a budget gap. So really led us to two options, either try to like borrow through a bond bill or try to move a lot of other town capital into one basket. I would, I would suggest. You know, take this up for consideration again in November, but, um, wanted to give you all this just as food for thought. That I think we ought to try to move ahead with something that's really about two million dollars, even if it's two point one, two point two, two point three. Something that's kind of in that range. Cause I think we've made so much headway on where we are. And I think the most troubling spot of the way the numbers came out from Axios was that it was like over a million dollars just on. Um, bathrooms and a warming kitchen, et cetera, et cetera, back there. Whereas up here in the historic building, the old chapel portion of the project, it was just about a million dollars. And it was, you know, six hundred and seventy dollars a square foot, which seems pretty reasonable to make, I think, really great changes to this place. Like we would be renovated inside and out. It would be fixed up with insulation, roofing.
And the new.
Yeah. And then I think that's the huge win is to, um, to change that so that you bring back two historic windows, you brighten up those two rooms, you change the function of all this space. So I think there's so many wins on this spot here. I'd hate to like delay the project a long time to kind of build something that's ultra deluxe on the back. Cause I think even if you do do it ultra deluxe, the way it was shown, it's, it's a lot of fancy kind of traditional architecture put on the, a building that's kind of small now. If it's going to make it a lot bigger, but it's not like you can really stand anywhere and go see it. But it's blocked by trees on that side and it's a fence on this side. So it's not like people are really going to go and experience that thing that we'd be paying for. So I, I think it's better to just, um. Unless it's proven that we can't just take the existing structure that's there, like completely strip it down and redo it. And then I, I can't imagine that that could cost more than five hundred dollars a square foot versus.
Well, what about the addition though? The flat roof addition? Are you?
That's what I'm saying. I'm just like stripping down to the studs.
Wait, 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 I didn't hear him. What did you think?
What I'm suggesting is look at like, um, strip that down to the studs where take off the, take off the roofing, take off all the drywall on the inside, take off all the siding, which a lot of that needed work anyway. And just put up new construction things, all new drywall.
Leave it there.
Leave it there, but completely reface it where.
And what about the kitchen?
You would, that would be in it. So it would just be part of it. And I think there's a sketch in there that shows a way like, uh, we, we were spending, uh, potentially spending a lot of money to basically make a kitchen. It's twenty five percent different than this. And I think it's, it's not worth the squeeze to, you know, spend much juice on it versus just. Build a new kitchen within the existing spot. Like I, I was even guilty that I was looking at like, hey, how can we make this better if we're going to be doing this project? But, um, I, I just don't think we're getting enough additional benefit for one point two, some million dollars worth of addition spending.
The historic part of this is the front part. So we're just gonna, we're just gonna crash the back essentially and just build it from the ashes. Just re, redo the whole thing.
Well, that's what has been proposed, but that's a big proponent of the cost. So of the, of the whole cost, it was two point seven five million. And almost half of that was redoing that, like tearing it down and rebuilding. What I'm saying is instead of completely tearing it down to the ground. You would leave the foundation, you would leave the wood studs and you would leave the roof, wood roof framing, you would repair it and just redo it like you would on a renovation.
And leave the roof line the same, do another flat roof?
Yeah, but, or you could even, you could even add on to that. You can make a pitch on top of it as long as you're using the same bearing points. There's a lot of freedom in what you could do.
There were questions about the foundations, about whether they were adequate to that.
Right.
Yeah, we don't really know what.
Did you meet with Wyman to talk to him about these alternatives?
I, I did before I joined Barb on a discussion and he was very dismissive about doing that. And he, each time. He would point out reasons why, not each time, but there was a couple of times he would point out reasons why, um, he was incorrect about it. So he would, he would. First one he said was that, oh, you can't because the ceilings are too low. They won't meet code. And he thought that they were actually lower than they are. He thought they were, you had to be seven, six to meet code and they're seven, nine. He thought they were lower. He just assumed. And he said, you can't do it because the, um, that has two by four studs, but that, that can be done. There's a ton of different ways. So he, he knows full well that it's very doable. It's, he preferred to just start over. I think it's, it's easier for him. There's less questions and he could. Design what he wants to design. And, and I, I think we need to ask him to, um, look at this in a way that the town can save some money. Cause I just don't feel like there's good payback on spending one point three on the addition. I feel like there's good payback and spending five hundred K, but then. Just use that other money to be able to get the project to go sooner rather than later. Um, so that's my suggestion. It's really, it's again, it's just food for thought. I feel strongly about it, but, um. I, I would need support. It would have, have to be more than just one council member saying to do that. Cause I think, um, Greg Weidman's predilection is to just kind of say, hey, we. Just assume that's unsavagable and we'll move on. Um, so that, that's really my thought. And I think the other caveat with it is, um. Like, like the options were really to either borrow or move all the eggs in, you know, one bucket for the town budget. I'm really not at all in favor of moving all the eggs. And I don't think there was a lot of support for borrowing for this. And I think that's, one of those has got to be considered if you want to do a project over three million.
Or wait for more money from the state.
Yeah, that could be a year or two. And I, I'm not sure if spending three plus million dollars on this building really even makes sense.
So you think you can get it down to two point one with the, with your proposal?
I, I don't know the exact number, but I think just in rough numbers, um, the Axios numbers, they had the renovation of. I, I, I took one of the options before and I kind of broke this apart line by line and put it in which major bucket is, cause I think I see. Three major buckets. One is kind of renovating the historic area, what we all think about for ten hall. The other was all the things you had to do outside the property, um, like all the sidewalks and everything else. So they had. Roughly a million dollars in renovation of the historic and they had right about five hundred K on everything surrounding the property, which left over one million in the back here. So all I'm suggesting is while we say, hey, we're. We're looking at really good things with that one million for the historic. We're looking at good things for that half a million for the site. And then just see if we can get that addition to be, you know, down to that five hundred K.
Including the kitchen.
Including the kitchen. And I think, you know, that's like quasi residential construction back there. It should be doable for five hundred K like.
The kitchen will continue to just be the warming kitchen that we talked about.
It has to be unless you want to do a full on commercial kitchen, cause you need a health permit and everything like that. And there really wasn't enough support for it. And I don't.
Good.
I don't think this site lends itself.
Couple of questions. Um, is the ADA required, um, drinking fountain included here? And if so, where is it?
It's not, but it could be easily put in somewhere e- either in the end of the closet, or there may even be a way to configure those two bathrooms where a lot of times it's done where it's, um, kind of almost stubbed out between the doors. I couldn't quite get it to fit, but it might be that Weidman's office could make it fit. And their fallback would be to put it on the back of the kitchen somewhere.
Does one of the bathrooms include the shower for the town maintenance staff?
No, we just, that, that was something I just suggested before, cause based on comments, some residents have made about. Um, town maintenance staff staying here in a snowstorm, but it's never, they've never expressed any interest in doing that. So, um.
Is that true?
That's true. Yeah.
They, they don't want.
They don't have any, they don't think it'd be money well spent. They said they wouldn't use it.
So this shows like two ADA accessible restrooms with baby changer space. So.
There's not a meeting of the minds between what your scaled down proposal is, which I appreciate that you did. And I think it's something that we really should pursue. But it doesn't sound like what Weidman and you have this, have a meeting of the minds about it. Is that true?
True. Yeah. I'm hoping he would kind of.
Can we persuade?
Get a little closer.
I mean, and with, I guess we can, it can vote.
It's, it's tricky, but it's, it's tricky because he, he's working for us. So he has to do what we ask, but he's also going to be signing documents where he would be the architect of record. So we had to, I, I do this all the time in my day job. I can only, I had to be careful about what you're pushing for, what you're asking for. So. We can't ask him to guarantee that our wish could come true, that it would make it go down to five hundred K, but I think it's worth studying to kind of see. And then. Um, I don't know what that could be. A lot of times it's, um, destructive demolition. Maybe you pull off sections of wall and so you can take a better look down there and repair it.
Are we already committed into Weidman? I mean, is there another?
Yes.
We're not.
Well, no, we have no signed contract at this point. They're not contracted to do anything else for the town.
That's right.
You selected them, but I can't put together a contract for moving to the next detailed level of design until I know what exactly they're supposed to be designing.
Right.
Right. But if we didn't want to keep. Correct. Right. But right now we're just in a holding pattern. We'd have to start over with the new R F P. If we wanted to switch to a different company.
We're not much used in doing it anyway. Like if, if it's, if it's something that pans out, I think you would eventually come around and support it like. We won't, want to find somebody else just to get a different answer that we wanted versus an answer that's, you know, true. So.
I have another question, Stephen. So you point out that your, you say that, um. The accessory room we already use is two hundred and forty four square feet.
the accessory room we already use is two hundred and forty-four square feet, which room are you referring to?
Uh, the one has the table over here, so, you know, on the two double doors, so what we typically will have, um, like food laid out, the the room that's poorly lit back here into the kitchen, so that room's two forty-four, the one that says approve this room was skylight, so I forgot, got the label on there.
So would we be losing that space, and I ca, I unfortunately I don't have the option four that we were looking at?
Yeah, option four, he basically, what he was showing us, like, um, taking the back middle section of the building, and he was making a two hundred and thirty-three square foot room, kind of adjacent to the kitchen, but facing the back, and to do that was putting the bathrooms in the middle, which made this other room here become basically a corridor, so what I was saying is that, uh, with this thing is that it may not be enough improvement the layout of option four to make it worthwhile versus considering doing this, which is, you know, totally redo that room that we currently use, totally redo the kitchen, take the old, um, temporary town office, make that into storage, put the bathrooms in the back over there, and then you would end up with a corridor that kind of leads towards the back, and then you know, say we save seven hundred thousand dollars or five hundred thousand dollars by, if this does pan out, then you know, if we decide, hey, we, the town would prefer, you know, five years from now, say, um, to have a bigger accessory room, something like that, there's enough room in the zoning, um, allowable on this lot to put on another room, I think it was like four hundred and twenty square foot, which I think it would be more useful to, to the town for that purpose than two thirty-three, and that would be, if that was desired and fundable in the future, that would be the four hundred-ish on top of two forty-four.
And then you're back to three million, but you're doing it in two phases.
Doing it in two phases, and that would just be the kind of thing where you would, you would fix, fix this up totally, and then, you know, if everybody says, hey, that's the thing we really, really also had, then, you know, get some other things accomplished and then add that on.
Weidemann thinks that the foundation underneath the addition, the flat roof addition, will support what you're talking about.
He wasn't sure, so that's the thing, you were saying, we would, he would just, we'd have to look at, and the other thing he was uneasy about is that the crawl space underneath that is really shallow, so.
I don't really think that now, can we do that, can we get a?
That's what Phil's asked for a couple of times, but I think it's, it's easier said than done.
To get underneath, to look underneath there, I've tried, there's ball and insulation, I mean, literally there's gaps and stuff.
People can do that for a living, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, if you want to hire somebody to go, put a bag suit on and go down there.
I've looked under there with George Miller before and been on the roof up here with Frank before, so it's, it's, you can get in there, but that, this is, uh, I think it was more that, um, Greg Weidemann was saying, Weidemann was saying that it'd be more ideal to have a deeper crawl space, so that's what he was proposing in the, the new plans, was to have something, I think it was like three feet on, and it would have, um, you know, more space to kind of get around and work on plumbing, but it, it's, it's a nice to have, but there's plenty of places around the world that don't have that, like including underneath here, it's not that deep.
Yeah, that raises another question for me, Stephen, so in the proposal of option four, I believe the attic of the addition is going to take in all the HVAC and everything, so where would that be in this version?
I was suggesting before that we do an electric heat pump, um, where you can do one of the cassettes that I was saying, and put it in the ceiling, and that was one of the things that Greg was trying to use as a, uh, um, kind of like a dead end, he was saying that there wouldn't be enough ceiling structure to fit that cassette in the ceiling, which was true, but I think it wouldn't really harm, be harmful to have like a, like a wall-mounted, kind of like a Mitsubishi, kind of a, you know, heat pump on the wall, um, the public space here has to have. Yeah, if you don't have to do it, the mechanical engineer on, that works for Weidemann would have to confirm that it could all work that way, but I think there are ways to do it, and we make it work in hotels, I can't imagine why you can't make it work here in an assembly hall.
Develop, they work great and they're really cheap.
They're very efficient, and it could be even considered for, for here, it could be a lot cheaper to run electric power off here, that, or or more efficient to run electric heat pump than it could be to, to have like a, a fuel-burning furnace again, um, and some of these things could go away, like the old chimney could go away, that's not being used, and, um, you know, we could be. No, not really, well, the chimney's taken off on the top, that's what would really matter, so, but it could be a potential, it'd be a little bit more sustainable with, um, the plans going forward, so.
Where's the unit now?
Uh, there's, I think there's one in this closet, and there's another in the back closet.
It's that closet there.
And there's one on the other.
And then in the back corner.
Yeah.
There's one.
But the engineer, the mechanical engineer would have to check to make sure that all the codes are met, there's a fresh air delivery requirement, so you may need some supplementary, um, conditions for that, so.
So, so what do we do next with this?
Yeah, so this is a discussion of a, of an update, and, and we didn't have a lot of time to get this before tonight's meeting, so what I would propose that we put it on the November agenda, um, with a more specific agenda, a plan for what we want to accomplish in that meeting. Today was a little more informational of Stephen's update on his research.
But is there anything we should do between now and then to determine the feasibility of what Stephen was proposing, that some questions that we could get answers to?
Like check the foundations.
Good, I mean, I guess I could come over with like the maintenance guys or something like that and look again, but I, I wonder if it's like premature, I think we'd have to, um, use that, um, the member discussion to figure out like whether this would be considered by a majority of us to be like one of the potential ways forward from it, so that's what I'm kind of asking, is to like consider.
I think there's a consensus on the.
Right here.
Council that doesn't want to spend three million dollars if there's a way to do something that would give us a functioning town hall and some amenity for the town and more at a two million dollar level, if that is feasible, I mean, that's always been the question.
Yeah, I understand the attraction of that, and I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I'm trying to think it through, um, but I believe, I mean, for myself, I think I'm still on the fence a bit, because I've seen it happen once you actually get into it, trying to restore an older addition like that. That's where I think we could get kind of nickel and dined, and we might not even know what those true costs are until we're into the construction and we get change order after change order after change order, so that's my fear, is that we could think we're getting something less expensive and in the end not really, and not get the better product in the end, because we are building for the future here.
I would agree.
I agree with that too, that's why I'm saying if there's something we could do to determine the feasibility of a more pared-down project that would let us have some more data points to know whether it's feasible to do something a lot less extensive.
Good, yeah, we tend to really cut the contingency, contingency down, because I think it would be a, a matter of, we wouldn't be shooting to try to do it for five hundred thousand, you know, if that becomes the number, we'd be shooting to do it four hundred thousand, say, with the potential that you could get hundred thousand in change orders, we wouldn't be looking at, you know, hey, let's hope to do it for five, and you know, have a, a much larger number of change orders, I think it would have to be a, a thing where it's really studied and determined, like, hey, this is just not, um, you're, you're saving a lot here, but you're gonna spend it back, and that's kind of what Greg Weidemann's contention was, that you, you spend a lot of money kind of fixing structures, but it, it's kind of runs the opposite of my experience, and I, I I can't deal with this at work, and I, I remember one of the projects where I was working on, where I'm just, I kept saying, like, it would be easier if we just like knocked this thing down and, and redid it, and I remember talking to the head of our estimating department, he's like, well, no, he's like, on something like, you know, like a demo on a rebuild, you really, if you're saving it, you're really starting at like half the cost, and you're trying to make it for less than, less, less than half the cost, so it's kind of, um, and that, that's kind of what this number leads to, this one point two, is really a lot of that, um, cost is from carefully extracting the existing addition and making sure you don't damage the historic building, and then ripping out all those footings, bringing them out, like a, a seven-foot channel on this side out to a dumpster, it has to be done all kind of carefully, then you got to come back in and do all the concrete work for the foundation and build everything else back there, and kind of carefully attach it back to the building. Like, that number would be a lot lower if you were saying, hey, let's build a one thousand square foot square maintenance building, it's just all that difficulty of those things kind of added on there, so that's where, where I'm wondering if that's our savings, is like cutting out a lot of that big heavy work, um, you would still have a lot of demo, like all the siding, all the drywall coming out, but that's a lot of guys with wheelbarrows, yeah, yeah. And the flat roof, that we purposely deferred that, we replaced the roof on this building in twenty eighteen or nineteen, and it was really just meant to be temporary, so it could be figured out what the longest term.
We need a roof on.
Plan would be, yeah, yeah, so it was purposely left, because we figured that it would definitely be at, at the very least replaced then, and there was a couple more years in it, um, and then this was the same one, this is that has an asphalt roof on it, which may or may not be the, you know, the final thing that's here in several years, um, you know, but that would be one of the things that would be studied, is do you, you know, what does it look like?
It seems to me if you and Weidemann could get on the same page, and with the feasibility of what it is we're talking about, I think it would make our decision process a lot clearer, but I think trying to do something that you're saying is, is feasible, but if Weidemann isn't on board, then we're kind of left in this no man's land.
Yeah, I need him to kind of be open to exploring it to make it worthwhile, because if he's gonna just be looking to doubt anything that comes.
It's always easier to just, you know, do something more expensive and, and not rely on something that's old and and troubled.
Is it possible that we could get, um, different version of your layout here with the whole building and both of before and after, because I'm a little confused, and some things look to be demoed and some things not, based on.
Yeah, I could do that, I had it mostly done, I was thinking the same thing, kind of like that other plan I, um, thrown out, just food for thought before, I could just do the same thing where it shows existing, and then the new, next to it, that might be something useful for for Weidemann, if we want to go that way, to have him, or as consultants, um, give us a study of, you know, various points, um. Because some of the, like, as an example, one of the things he was saying was difficult before, is I was showing a lot of windows kind of moved three feet over, and some were deleted, and some were widening, which is really not that hard, a carpenter can do that in a couple hours, um, but he, he was making such a big deal of that, I think he might have a little bit more, um, comfort knowing that what I'm suggesting is really just like, you know, keep the studs and just take out the old windows that are not historic back there and put in whatever fits that's new, um, that kind of thing. It might, it might lessen his number of points of leeryness, I guess.
Totally, it'd be easier for us to, I think, to discuss it.
Yeah.
I think the foundation and the HVAC are going to be two of the bigger things, though.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I think I've heard here is, A, Stephen's going to, um, update his drawings and, um, include a existing as a comparison. Um, also, I think Barb, when, when you send that back out again, if you could add the option four so that we can see existing option four and this version side by side, that would be helpful, um. Did we come up with any options for, um, getting more intel on the, the structural integrity of the?
Foundation.
The foundation.
That's what I don't know, I mean, it's, is it, is it worth asking? I don't know if Weidemann had a structural engineer look at it, like, usually when I've done these kind of studies on a building, we had a structural engineer write a report, um.
Well, we have the property condition review from Axios.
I just don't remember structural being in it.
I don't.
And I think, I think even if it was in there, I don't think they, I think they purposely disregarded the existing foundation in the back, because they were assuming it was taken out, yeah. So it would be a matter of whether we want a Weidemann consultant, or Weidemann, or some other um, structural engineer to take a look at it, to see, see how it looks.
That would be helpful.
Thank you.
I think it would be a really good data point.
Agreed.
So what, what, what would that be again?
A structural engineer to look at the foundation and say, can we use it for a new addition, a new renovation, a new renovation of the existing building back there.
I think after the fact, I think Greg Weidemann did come and look at it and didn't notice any, I recall correctly, and maybe Barbara remembers better than me. I think he looked at it again and didn't see anything visible from the outside, so it would be a matter of kind of looking at it again, looking at it further, um, to see if there's something maybe that, that wasn't seen on that prior visit.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and find an agenda item, but this question came up before, and they had circled back around with Axios, I can try to find that and send that back out to you all.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I have this paper copy of the, the condition assessment, it looked like what they did was like just costing out, bringing up to code the existing without, um, the proposed renovation.
Oh, that's right, yeah, they did say, and I think they didn't, I think they said that they didn't see any observable.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, that's what I recall, but they never.
It was them that did that, it wasn't Weidemann.
Yeah, actually, yeah, um, and I, but the, my concern was the fact that nobody actually like dug a hole and looked down and see what the foundation really looked like or any of that stuff.
I remember Peter Benjamin saying when they were renovating Penn Place, that they found out that there was no, nothing connecting the supporting.
The addition to the original house.
And they were all hanging in the air, and it cost a lot of money after they got into it, because there was nothing connecting the building to the ground.
Yeah, that's the kind of thing you would have to have somebody look at here, and say, hey, this, this is cracking, wonder why, it's probably because of X, so. And we found that with the Penn Place porch too, like all the columns are rounded at the.
Yeah, like that's the kind of thing that we should find out before we decide what we're doing.
So Barb, do you feel like you have enough direction between now and November?
Um, somewhat, I think some of the issues that have come up have been communications that over the course of the past year, I just need to dig up again, because I, I think there has been some information shared on some of these things, so, um, I was trying to scroll through my email, but I, I can just send that out to you all and include it in the agenda packet for November.
Thank you.
And, uh, one, one last question before we close this out, are we proposing, um, another meeting with Mr. Weidemann? Or not until our next meeting, when we look at this next version?
That's up to you all, um.
I'm asking, I think the group.
Well, Dave had a meeting with.
We don't currently have a contract.
That was last year.
Right.
Yeah, there was a meeting around, it was November of last year, because it was.
My intent was really to have a lot of this just be a potential discussion, like advance for November, so, I mean, I could put together the sketches, maybe discuss it in November, I guess you're all.
Do you think we have enough information about the existing integrity of the existing building to make a decision about going forward with this less extensive renovation?
Not potentially make the decision, but at least to, to know if it's worth asking to explore it, yeah, because you can't really.
And if we could all commit, I think, between now and November, to read the, the property condition review that Barb's going to resend to us, I think that will help us all to have a better sense of whether we need to hire a structural engineer to come and do some official testing.
Yeah, because I think that's really the missing piece of this.
Okay, alright, any further discussion on that topic?
The only.
That, that was our last agenda item.
And cut, cut, um, parks and open spaces meeting on Wednesday, they're talking about in down.
Okay, great, thank you very much, alright, we are adjourned.